Hey, today is Tuesday. Today is Tuesday, April 4th. I will call this meeting to order and on April 4th, it'll be in person and via Zoom. So City Clerk Guzzetta, please take the roll call.
Councilmember Barbados. Vice Mayor Chua. Vice Mayor Chua.
Vice Mayor Chua. Hold on, let me see. Going down, down.
Because the sound is... The sound is... Oh, there.
Here. Councilmember Leon. Here. Councilmember Fan.
I'm here.
Mayor Montana.
I'm here.
Thank you, Councilmember Fan. And I am here.
So because Councilmember Fan is seeking to attend via Zoom, is he still? Councilmember Fan, are you still on Zoom?
Yes, I am.
Um, we have to go through the AB 2449 process. The council has to vote to determine whether just cause or an emergency situation exists for you to appear via Zoom. Can you please tell the council a brief description without giving away any private information, what the reason for the Zoom appearance is?
My wife is very pregnant.
Thank you. Did you have anything else?
No.
Okay, so then we would ask, is there a motion from the council to allow Councilmember Fan to appear for just cause or an emergency situation under AB 2449?
Vice Mayor Chua. So move.
Second.
Councilmember Leon. Second. Okay. All right, so we will adjourn to closed session.
I believe you need to take a vote among the three.
Oh, that's right. So Councilmember Fan, we're going to vote now if you're excused.
Councilmember Barbados. Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Leon. Oops. Aye. Mayor Montana.
Aye.
And then Councilmember Barbados just arrived. Councilmember Barbados.
This is to vote to excuse Councilmember Fan from not attending in person.
This is the under AB 2449. Councilmember Fan has offered that his wife is very pregnant and requires his attendance virtually. You're voting as to whether that's a just clause or emergency situation.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And we will adjourn to closed session.
So Mayor, for just one second. So that motion carried, Councilmember Fan, you'll be able to appear. It's not set up in closed session, so it'll take just a minute for you to be able to log on when we move to closed session. There are two closed session items today, Mayor, if I may introduce them.
Please.
You have conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.92, facts and circumstances related to the expiration of a contract to which the city is a party, city is a defendant. Then you have Item B, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957.6, agency designated representative, Nick Reisch, Human Resources Director. Bartending unit is Launa UPEC, and they represent Protech and MEA. You very much.
Thank you. And now we're going to call for the public comment on closed session item. Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom? Okay, thank you. So now we are going to adjourn to closed session. Thank you.
Meeting called to order. Today Tuesday, April 4th. We have received, we have just received a return back from closed session. The city attorney will announce.
Thank you, Mayor. This time there's nothing to report out from closed session.
Thank you. And now we will, Councilmember Leon will lead the pledge of allegiance. Let everyone stand. Thank you, Councilmember Leon. Next, we'll have the invocation led by Councilmember Phan.
I'm going to pass.
Would anyone else like to do an invocation? Vice Mayor? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Guide us for this evening to make decisions what's best for the city. Help us with clear mind, conscience, and wisdom to do the right thing for our citizens, for our staff, for the businesses, and for, for the properties of our businesses and our residents. Help us to be compassionate, committed, public servants for the city of Milpitas. Amen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, now it is time for presentations. We will do the Vietnamese American Heritage Month proclamation and Hafan will accept the proclamation. Let me go down there. Does everyone go down? Welcome, everyone. So, Hafan will accept the proclamation. This is Vietnamese American Heritage Month. Hafan, would you please come here? Thank you. So, Vietnamese Americans are the fourth largest Asian-American group in the United States, with California home to roughly one-third of that community. Forced to flee their homeland at the end of the Vietnam War, they quickly built strong communities, founded small businesses, and became proud members of the United States Armed Forces. Vietnamese Americans have had a profound impact on our society as leaders in all facets of life, thriving as athletes, public servants, entrepreneurs, and artists. Join me, Mayor Carmen Montano, and the Milpitas City Council in proclaiming the month of April 2023 as Vietnamese American Heritage Month to honor and recognize the entrepreneurship and fortitude of individuals who have helped build our community and country. And this is going to be given to Hafan. And just another note, Hafan is also on our, which commission is it? The Community Advisory Commission? Senior Advisory Commission. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an honor to be here tonight. First, we'd like to thank you, all of you, for coming. April, every year, April is a black, April, a black month for all the Vietnamese-American community people. To us, April is a painful month. It's the month that all of us had to leave our country for political reason. And we are here, we're very happy to be here. After 48 years of living here in this country, to us, this is our country. We don't say even second country, this is our country. And Milpitas is where I have lived for 36 years. I, I feel like this is my home, this is really my home. And I've been serving Milpitas in many, many volunteer functions. So tonight, it's an honor, it's a pleasure to be here, to receive this proclamation. To us, I will never forget tonight's presentation from the mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next, National Public Safety Telecommunications, Telecommunicators. Actually, the councilmembers can go back because now it's more like, it's more of a, for Telecommunications Week and Fair Housing Month. National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Annually, in the second week of April, telecommunications personnel in the public safety community are honored. National Public Safety Communicators Week is a time to celebrate and thank the hard-working men and women dedicating their lives to serving the public. They are the first and the most critical contact members of the public half with emergency services and are a vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics. Join me, Mayor Carmen Montano, and the Milpitas City Council in proclaiming the week of April 9 through 15th as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in order to honor the men and women that demonstrate compassion, understanding, and professionalism each and every day. Thank you so much for the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And here is the proclamation. Let me ask, Chief Hernandez, would you like to come and accept this? Since you weren't in the...
Good evening, everybody in council. First, on behalf of our Milpitas dispatchers, and Lena Silas is one of our dispatchers, has been with us for 22 years, currently serves as a supervisor within the dispatch group. She's also a resident of the city. And as you will find in the police department, many of our employees are residents of the city. And we take our job very serious, and it's very personal to us, the level of service that we provide. Just to put in perspective what this means and what our dispatchers mean to us as police officers and firefighters out on the street, the state has a standard for which dispatchers are supposed to answer emergency call within so many seconds. That state average is 90% of the calls that come into a 911 center should be answered in 15 seconds or less. That's the state standard. What we're doing in Milpitas is 95% of the 911 calls that come into our dispatch center are answered on average in less than 10 seconds. That's phenomenal, especially when you think of, thank you. Especially when you think of the hardships in staffing and all the other tasks that our dispatchers are doing, it's actually a very phenomenal response time. I'd asked Lena what our numbers were for March alone, and our dispatchers answered 97% of the calls in under 10 seconds and 99.7% of the calls in under 15 seconds. Our dispatchers are destroying the state average. And it really speaks to the quality of the individuals that are out there that are answering the call. Our emergency responders arrive to your house in under three minutes to emergencies. But the reality is that that starts with our dispatchers and how fast they are. They are the unsung heroes of every response that you get from either the police department or the fire department. And we could not do that without the support of our councilmembers who make sure that we have the appropriate equipment to respond to each emergency that you guys call us about. So, to the council, thank you very much, and to all the citizens as well, thank you very much as well. Thank you.
Okay, this is now Fair Housing Month. Is Joshua On from Project Sentinel here? Would you please come up? I'm going to ask you if you want to accept it. So, Fair Housing Month. April is nationally recognized as Fair Housing Month. In April 1968, President Lyndon B. Johnson signed into law the Civil Rights Act of 1968, of which Title 13 is also known as the Fair Housing Act. It enshrined, oh, actually, no, it's, it enshrined into federal law the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States. The city of Milpitas is an inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promoting activities by private and public entities to provide and advocate for equal housing, opportunities for all residents and prospective residents. And I just want to make a correction, it is Title 8, not Title 13. Join me, Mayor Carmen Montano, and the Milpitas City Council in proclaiming the month of April 2023 as Fair Housing Month. I encourage all residents and community organizations to celebrate the value of diverse communities and the support, and to support the goal of equal housing opportunities for all people. So, thank you very much, Joshua On from Project Sentinel.
Sorry. Mayor Montano and Vice Mayor, Councilmember Phan Ling, and Barbadian, Barbadian? I'm sorry. Yes, as well as communities and members of the city of Milpitas. My name is Joshua On, and I am representing my organization, Project Sentinel, to accept this proclamation. And before my acceptance speech, I would like for us to pause and recognize the fact that we are currently gathering on the ancestral and unceded land of the Alone people. I want to pay my respects to their elders and all Alone people past and present as we gather here today. So, I am honored to accept this proclamation from the Milpitas City Council to declare a...
and ending housing discrimination in the United States. The city of Mopetis is an inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promoting activities by private and public entities to provide and advocate for equal housing, opportunities for all residents and prospective residents. And I just want to make a correction. It is Title 8, not Title 13. Join me, Mayor Carmen Montano and the Mopetis City Council in proclaiming the month of April 2023 as Fair Housing Month. I encourage all residents and community organizations to celebrate the value of diverse communities and the support and to support the goal of equal housing opportunities for all people. So thank you very much, Joshua On from Project Sentinel.
Mayor Montana and Vice Mayor, Councilmember Fan Ling and Barbadiya? Barbadiya? I'm sorry. Yes, as well as communities and members of the city of Mopetis. My name is Joshua On, and I am representing my organization, Project Sentinel, to accept this proclamation. And before my acceptance speech, I would like for us to pause and recognize the fact that we are currently gathering on the ancestral and unceded land of the Alone people. I want to pay my respects to their elders and all Alone people past and present as we gather here today. So I am honored to accept this proclamation from the Mopetis City Council to declare April a Fair Housing Month. Project Sentinel and I are grateful for the city's support in our mission to ensure equity and fairness in housing for all people, regardless of characteristic and differences. We will all need to continue working toward an equitable and fair future as intended by the Constitution, both rights and more recently, the Fair Housing Act of 1968. Toward that end, we're also hosting a Fair Housing Symposium on April 28, 2023, to advance such mission and engage in constructive and intersectional dialogues regarding fair housing. I invite the city council, the mayor, and all members of the community to join us at our symposium in Redwood City. And thank you for the Mopetis City Council for your time and space.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, audience and the proclamation awardees. So I will go, we will now go to public forum, and we will give two minutes for the public forum. Members of the public are invited to speak on any item that does not appear on today's agenda. The public forum will be limited to two minutes. So call for speakers.
We have city clerk. We have two cards. The first is from Rob Means, the second is from Karina Dominguez.
Thank you. Rob Means.
City Council. In the past meetings, I've talked about the financial costs of firing our city manager. Spoke about the risks. Obviously, the financial costs seem to be going up with the lawsuit that we're going to be defending ourselves against. The risk apparently has also gone up as a result of that. City Hall morale. I worked in corporate America for about 20 years, so I had an idea of how things operate in large institutions. I learned how to make commitments and keep commitments. And we saw how change happens in large organizations like that. And that's when I first became really aware of morale in a in an agency, shall we say, and how it can be damaged by shifts in things, particularly things that people don't understand, that don't make a lot of sense to the employees. So we have a similar situation going on now. I anticipate that morale in City Hall is being hurt by this decision by the city council. But beyond that is also the prestige and respect that the city holds within the larger community around us. We've gone through some challenging times over the last X years when conflicts between then-mayor Tran and others on the council created some difficulty. And that got out into the public and folks learned about it. And it diminished the brand, shall we say, of Mopetis. And this particular conflict is doing the same. You know, especially as it spirals kind of out of control, shall we say? Things would just keep getting worse. Anyway, keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, the next card is for Karina Dominguez. She will be followed by Osborne Way and then Natasha Tewari.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. My name is Karina Dominguez. I'm a former city council member, vice mayor, and a resident of Mopetis for over 20 years. I stand before you to express my disappointment. And frankly, it feels so sick to be before you looking in your eyes. I don't know what you're thinking. What are you doing, Mayor Carmen Montano? Is this what you're sacrificing so people could call you mayor? And Councilmember Gary Barbado, you stood in front of a church and you gave your word for an endorsement. And I gave it to you. And you promised to put the people first. This isn't it. Taxpayers' money is being wasted. Long city council meetings behind a closed door is keeping transparency away from the public. And frankly, it is a repetition of behavior that I've seen in you, Vice Mayor Evelyn Chua, when I was part of the water task force. You are the one that feeds the news media. You are the one that sends all of these messages. And it is in emails. And so do you, Mayor Carmen Montano. The public records request that I have received makes me so sick to my stomach. The two women leaders in this city are not protecting the city or the residents. Frankly, what's happening, you see it to my right. I am failing to understand why this leadership has allowed city attorney to continue his duties in making legal decisions for our community despite the misogynistic comments that were found on his Twitter account. This chamber passed ordinances, public policy, and language that doesn't support this type of behavior. This misogynistic behavior is a form of violence against not just young girls and women, but our entire community. It is not a fabric or a reflection of those that live here or the inclusive and kind place to live. Please make it right.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next.
The next speaker will be Osborne Way, followed by Natasha Tewari, and then Hannah Edwin.
Hello, welcome. This is the Mopetis High School AeroTech Club, and they have come here just specifically to talk about their project at Mopetis High School. Thank you. Let me proceed.
All right, thank you. Hello, my name is Osborne Way, president and founder of AeroTech. And I'm a junior at Mopetis High in Eagle Scout at Trip 170. And thank you all for having us here today. AeroTech was created under the admiration and inspiration of what engineering has done to bring everyone and everything here today, literally and figuratively, especially aerospace engineering, ranging from transporting people through the air to putting humans on the moon. Ingenuity is truly amazing. And that is why, and many more like me, aspire to become an engineer. And that's the vision of AeroTech, to be a place for students to come and learn more about aerospace engineering through theoretical and applied experiments and discussions. This year, our first year, we did lectures, had hosted guest speakers, and are currently competing in TARC, the American Rocketry Challenge. Thank you for believing in our goals and our dreams and supporting us with a grant, for making it possible for us to compete in TARC. And we are grateful for each of you. Mayor Montano and City Councilmember, thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Thank you. Hi, can I get started? Okay. Hi, my name is Natasha Tewari, and I'm also speaking on behalf of AeroTech. I'm AeroTech's official treasurer, and I've been a part of AeroTech since its very beginning last summer. AeroTech started out with the initial purpose to make, to pursue aerospace engineering. But we have come such a long way since then, from getting renowned speakers from Lockheed Martin to hosting our own rocket launches, to building our very own rockets. I'd like to say that everyone behind me has put in hours of hard work to make and to pursue aerospace engineering to its extent. However, one problem that's always held us back has been money. As we broaden our horizons to impact not just other Mopetis high school members, but the entire Mopetis community, the city council's support has, is, and will continue to mean a lot to AeroTech and all of its members. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Hannah Edwin, and I'm a sophomore at Mopetis High School, and I'm a member of AeroTech. It has always been my dream to work at NASA. And I never really knew much about how to work there and what the community is like there. And being in AeroTech has helped me get the work experience, to know what it's like to work as a team, to achieve a very difficult goal, such as rocking a locket at a specific apogee within a specific time. And not only that, I have made very good friends and connections within this club. I have learned a lot about aerospace. And I could practice, I'm proud to say that I'm very passionate about aerospace. And I believe that AeroTech can help a lot of young people to be interested in aerospace as a whole. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, the next speaker is Roman Slivera and Hui Pham.
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Roman Slivera, and I'm also a junior at Mopetis High School. And I'm supposed to be. My name is Roman Slivera, and I'm a junior at Mopetis High School. And I'm one of the officers of AeroTech. In particular, I'm responsible for overseeing and organizing our participation in the American Rocketry Challenge, which, as my fellow AeroTech members have mentioned, is a model rocketry competition that aims to encourage and stimulate student interest in aerospace engineering and more generally in science and teamwork. Based on everything that we've seen, based on the hard work that our members have put in, I can say with confidence that this has been an amazing success. All of our students have learned a great deal through the lectures and projects and launches that we have carried out. And many other students who are not in the club have expressed interest in all the opportunities that we have for learning. We have developed, I think, for the first time, kind of this opportunity to focus on aerospace engineering and this field of STEM in Mopetis High School and hopefully further in the Mopetis community. And this just presents the, an amazing opportunity for everybody. I'd like to thank the mayor, the vice mayor, and everybody on the council for their support in helping us reach this exciting and amazing goal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Hi. Good evening, city councils. My name is Hui Pham. I'm a Mopetis high school teacher and also the advisor for this amazing AeroTech Club. Just want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts for the generous donations. To be honest, I don't know much about rocketry, and this is my first year running, advising the club. But I think these group of kids that you see behind me did an amazing job running the club since the beginning of the school year. They've, you know, met up every week, running, designing rockets, setting up fundraisings and as well as lectures for other students who are interested in rocketry. So again, I just want to say thank you for the generous donation for AeroTech.
Thank you. Next.
I believe there were two more students that wanted to address the council.
Hi, everyone. My name is Isaac Jones, and I'm a junior at Mopetis High School. I don't have a speech plan, so I'll make it quick. I have been a Mopetis resident since I was born. And in the MUSD system, we have what we know as the culture of "we." And we have this legacy carried on from the Sunny Hills District, which was one of the first racially integrated communities in the world, or in the US especially. So we've been able to carry this on thanks to all the amazing clubs at the high school. And we thank you, thank you for all of the support that we have. And I just want to say that all of Mopetis, especially you as the council members, should be able to celebrate inner successes at the high school for all the support you've given us. This is something that not a lot of the other schools or other teams in the Bay Area have access to, to be able to converse directly with their city leaders and to have the privilege to talk to them about getting support for them. So we thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Arjun Pai. I've had the privilege this year of being an officer of AeroTech. And I just want to say that I'm really, really thankful for this club. For many years now, I've, I've not, I've been pretty indecisive on what I'd want to pursue in the future. And now I feel like this club has really opened up many doors for me. I feel like engineering is something I definitely want to do in the future. And I hope this club will be able to inspire many other students like me. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next card is Volterra Montemayor.
Oh, can we, we want to take a picture real quick. Come on, all the council members. We're going to go off track here. Thank you all for coming down to City Hall. Mr. Montemayor, come on, come on up.
Volterra Montemayor, Mopetis, the mayor, vice mayor, member of the city council, assistant city manager and stuff. Oh, yeah, you touched me. My topic is sporadic. I, congratulations, guy. I'm in line with a I used to be a co-pilot navigator with the electromagnetic survey and multispectral photography. So I enjoyed, I played, we played with the clouds, we played with the weather. So, yeah, I, I'm amazed today. In line with my, yeah. I make, I don't know, I'm, my expertise, should I say? Yeah, I, I talk to people, they call me, and they talk about the conditions of the roads now, the conditions of ways from a hotel, from a road. Specifically by Marriott Hotel, they said it's hard to go in and out. So in other words, we need, for the sea, we need safety. Anyway, because of the weather, maybe there are cracks and crevices. So they want me to speak here to inform the mayor what was anyway, the mayor is always around also, so she knows. And everybody knows the condition of the roads, the weather. We just have storms. And we have to be understanding. We have to understand that it's not easy to do some projects, especially with the roads, but Mopetis is doing good. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk, is there anyone else?
I have no more cards for in-person.
Okay, is there anyone on Zoom?
There are no raised hands.
Okay, great, thank you. Moving on to the announcement of the conflict of interest and campaign contributions. We have city attorney Michael Mottolpassi.
Thank you, Mayor. I ask you, Mayor, and each of the council members, whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Councilmember Barbado. None. Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor Chua. Councilmember Leanne. Councilmember Fan.
None.
Mayor Montana.
None.
Thank you. I also ask each of you to please disclose any campaign contributions of $100 or more received within the last 12 months from any of the parties entering into contracts city on tonight's agenda or contributions received from development, project applicant for development projects on tonight's agenda.
Councilmember Barbado. Vice Mayor Chua.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Count, Councilmember Fan.
None.
Mayor Montana.
Myself as a none.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that there are no reported conflicts.
Thank you very much. So now I'm going to ask Vice Mayor to read the code of conduct. And let me hold on till I finish this.
Thank you, Mayor. Be respectful and courteous.
Be respectful and courteous. Model civility. Avoid surprises. Praise publicly and criticize privately. Focus on the issue, not the person. Refrain from using electronic devices while on the council dais. Disclose conflict of interest and affiliations related to agenda items. Separate governing from campaigning. The council speaks with one voice after making a policy decision. Respect the line between policy and administration. Council will hold one another accountable to comply with this code of conduct. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. So now moving on to the approval of the agenda. Does any of my colleagues, do any of my colleagues have any changes? If not, we will call for the motion and a second. So move.
Second.
It was moved by Vice Mayor Chua and seconded by Councilmember Leanne. And now we will call for the vote.
Councilmember Barbados.
Hold on, let me see.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember. Councilmember Phan.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
Myself as an aye.
Okay. And again, it was motion by, moved by Vice Mayor Chua, seconded by Councilmember Leanne, and the vote was unanimous. Thank you. So now we're going to move on to the consent calendar. We'll take the consent calendar, ask any staff if there were any comments. And is it okay to proceed as agendas? Call for the public comment.
Yes, that's correct, Mayor Montano. No comments.
And public comment on consent calendar?
I have no speaker cards.
Okay, and then on Zoom?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. So we will have a, did you have a question? Consent calendar. Okay, I didn't see your name. Hold on. And Councilmember Ellen.
Thank you. I would like to remove C6, please.
Okay. Remove C6.
C6.
And what, what is that, if you may, I may ask?
Say that again.
For clarification for the audience.
For clarification.
This is the animal control service. Animal control service services, okay? Are there any other removals? Okay, hold on a minute.
16 for me.
Removing C16, and that is, has approved the addition of names to the city naming list for the city, the new city park names. Okay? That has been removed. And let me see, hold on a minute. Vice Mayor Chua.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to pull C13 and C14.
C13 and C14, so C13 is, do you want to say?
Water service. Water service charges and sewer service charges. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Okay, now that is it. We have, so we have pulled C6, C16, C13, C14. Is there a motion? 16, yeah. Is there a motion? Can we pull this C16? Okay, all right. So is there a motion and a second? Hold on, hold on. Okay. Councilmember Leanne.
Yes. Move to approve consent items except for C6, 13, 14, and 16.
Is there a second? And, I could find his name here. Bear with, bear with me.
Second.
It was seconded by Councilmember Phan. Okay, so now we're going to call for the vote.
Councilmember Barbados.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Councilmember Phan.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye. Thank you.
It's unanimous. Okay, so now we are moving on to, hold on, let's see, item 17. Is it, is it item 17?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Okay, so, Assistant City Attorney, I mean City Manager, I'm sorry.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
So this is a public hearing item, item 17. It's adopting, adopt a resolution approving a site development permit, conditional use permit, vesting tentative map, density bonus permit, tree removal permit, and environmental assessment to allow the development of a 57 townhome condominiums and associated site improvements on an approximately 2.35 acre site located in the mixed-use zoning district at 612 South Main Street, APN number 086-25-027028, located within the Midtown specific plan area. And this is submitted under California Senate Bill 330, which is the Housing Crisis Act of 2019. And we will have Ned Thomas, our planning director, present on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Montano and members of the city council. It's a pleasure to be with you again tonight, this time as noted with a development project on South Main Street. Our associate planner Christina Fung is here to present the staff report. And following her report, Leah Beniston, the senior vice president with True Life Companies, the applicant, I believe also has a short presentation on the project, and then we're happy to entertain your comments and questions. So I'll turn the time over to Christina for the presentation.
Thank you, Director Thomas, and good evening, mayor, council members, fellow staff, guests, and residents of Milpitas. As mentioned, the item before you is a request for a development application for the True Life Company's townhomes. Next slide, please. The application is for a number of different entitlements that includes a site development permit, conditional use permit, vesting tentative map, density bonus permit, tree removal permit, and environmental assessment to allow the demolition of one multi-tenant commercial and office building, the removal and replacement of 13 ordinate sized trees in order to develop 57 townhome condominiums and plant up to 157 new trees on the same site at 612 South Main Street. The development will consist of nine multifamily residential buildings up to 37 feet and three stories in height with 123 vehicle parking spaces and associated site improvements on a 2.35 acre site. The developer proposes nine below market rate units for sale, which allows them to invoke the state density bonus law pursuant to Government Code Section 65915 and Senate Bill 330, also known as the Housing Crisis Act of 2019. By invoking the state density bonus law in SB 330, the developer is eligible for concessions, waivers, and parking standards that are different than the city standards. And this picture is a rendering of the proposed project facing South Main Street. Next slide, please. And here we see a satellite view of both lots outlined in red. The site is located on the east side of South Main Street and west of Hammond Way. The project site is a combination of two adjacent parcels. The northern parcel is 600 South Main Street and the one to the south is 612 to 650 South Main Street. The parcel at 600 South Main Street is vacant and the adjacent parcel is developed with a partial two-story multi-tenant commercial and office building with approximately 27,500 square feet of space. At present, the building is occupied with a mix of tenants, including a Montessori school, a daycare, and a gymnastics center. Next slide, please. And this map demonstrates the project site zoning designation. The properties are also located in the Midtown specific plan area and will be in the future rebranded Midtown Gateway Specific Plan Area. The project is located in the mixed-use MXD zoning district represented by the light purple color. The site is surrounded by other mixed-use zone properties, creating a complementary use and development style of what is being proposed. Note that an existing mini storage facility is located east of the site, creating a buffer between the proposed townhomes and the railroad tracks along Hammond Way. Next slide, please. This project requires a site development permit to develop the 57 townhome residential units. In total, the project would include 57 units that are all three-bedroom, three-story units. All of the units will either have a three or three and a half bathroom configuration and are attached townhomes in nine buildings around the site as shown. The density required of the mixed-use district in the Midtown specific plan is 21 to 30 dwelling units per acre. As the project proposes 57 townhomes on 2.35 acres, the project meets the density requirement by proposing 24.2 dwelling units per acre. The project also includes site improvements like guest parking, internal driveways to access to parking garages, 157 new trees, a private park amenity, and landscape buffers along the rear inside property lines and the South Main Street frontage. Next slide, please. The project also includes a vesting tentative map, which can only be approved via a conditional use permit. The tentative map will allow the developer to subdivide the units into condominiums where they will be made for sale. Unlike fee simple ownership, condominium ownership means that the owner has individual title to the inside space of their unit, but all of the unit's owners will have undivided interest in the remainder of the property, which will be managed by a homeowners association. Because the subdivision is more than five residential units, the city council has the final decision on the project with the recommendation of approval from the planning commission. Next slide, please. The project also includes a density bonus permit, which is allowed for projects that incorporate affordable housing units. The city of Milpitas, via our Affordable Housing Ordinance, requires all developers incorporate up to 15% of their total units as affordable units, also known as below market rate or BMR units. The image here represents all 57 townhomes. 15% of 57 units is 8.55 units, and the developer has proposed to develop nine BMR units identified as the townhomes with the red dots on the slide. The distribution is further detailed in the agenda report on pages 13 and 14. Since the city has an Affordable Housing Ordinance, which has a greater percentage of affordable housing than the state density bonus law requires, the developer is automatically granted state density bonus law provisions. Next slide, please. Density bonus law prohibits local jurisdictions from requiring a developer to meet certain objective design standards like setbacks, heights, or required parking spaces, as long as the applicant or developer can demonstrate that the relief of the standard equates to an actual identifiable cost reduction. This is referred to as a density bonus waiver. Since the project qualifies for a density bonus permit, the development qualifies for the three proposed waivers. The developer is requesting a waiver for the front and rear setbacks and for the amount of guest parking. The Midtown specific plan for mixed-use zoning requires the front setback to be a minimum of eight feet and a maximum of 15 feet. The developer is proposing a new front setback of approximately 20 feet for the three buildings fronting South Main Street to accommodate existing public service easements. The rear setback requirement of this district is a minimum of 10 feet, and the applicant is proposing a new rear setback of five feet for the remaining six buildings as a result of accommodating the existing public service easements in the front along South Main Street. Lastly, the applicant proposes an overall guest parking reduction where the zoning regulations required 17 guest parking spaces, but the applicant is proposing nine guest parking stalls. It is important to note that the state density bonus law further limits the amount of required parking spaces with reduced ratios that differ from city standards and also completely removes the requirement for any guest parking stalls. This is detailed in the agenda report in tables 6 through 8. However, the developer still sees value in providing guest parking and proposes to include nine guest stalls into the project, which exceeds the density bonus law standards of zero guest stalls. And this waiver must be approved as they are providing the minimum amount of affordable housing units. All reviewing departments, including building, fire, engineering, and police, have reviewed the plans with the proposed setback waivers and reduced guest parking numbers and found no public health or safety problem. As such, the city must grant the three requested waivers as a result in identifiable and actual cost reductions to provide for affordable housing costs and opposing the original setback in parking standards would physically preclude the project from being built. Next slide, please. The project's design concept includes three-story building heights consistent with existing and planned mixed-use development along South Main Street. The contemporary design includes the following colors and materials. For the roof, composition shingle. For the exterior, stucco finish with fiber cement siding, party panel siding and fiber cement texture panel and horizontal shiplape siding. There will also be elements of metal siding and two types of monochratic. And regarding the trim and accents, there will be bronze metal and metal railings with panel siding. For the entry door, contemporary front entry doors with side light. And for the garage door, steel garage material with contemporary slim windows. Overall, the earth tone colors and materials were chosen to complement the surrounding neighborhood. Next slide, please. The project includes the removal of 13 ordinate sized trees, which will be replaced with up to 115 new seven new trees on the same site. Additional landscaping elements include a four-foot wide concrete walkway along the pathway to each unit and around the development, as well as a private park amenity you can see slightly to the right of the middle of the project site, that includes a pergola, the mailbox station, bicycle racks for up to 12 bikes, picnic tables and benches, a playground with synthetic turf and a concrete band, and various trees and landscaping. Details of the private park amenity are shown on Plan Sheet L2. The proposed tree plantings include, but are not limited to, various evergreen trees such as like magnolia species and small flowering accent trees such as a lavender crape myrtle, as well as multiple types of shrubs and ground covers and special stormwater treatment shrubs and glasses and around strategic places around the project site and around each building. The proposed plant palette is detailed on Plan Sheet L6. Next slide, please. And on this slide, I wanted to demonstrate some of the conceptual designs and features of the private park amenity area. The pergola will provide a shade structure for residents to enjoy the dining tables underneath and will be a family-friendly development with incorporation of the playground. As you can see, the color scheme and the siding of the structures will match and be complementary to the residential development in the dark gray and yellow accent tones. Many of these details and other proposed features of the park are in the L sheet of the plan set. Next slide, please. The Midtown specific plan area requires all new developments to provide parkland or parkland fees to develop open space. The parkland fee is based upon the estimated number of persons expected to reside in the development per U.S. Census definitions and the estimated value of parkland in the city of Milpitas that was adopted by City Council Resolution Number 8437. The developer proposes 57 units, resulting in an estimated population of 142 new residents. Based on this population estimate, the applicant must provide 0.5 acres of parkland equivalent to approximately $1.4 million. In the Midtown specific plan area, at least two of every three and a half acres shall be provided as public parkland. And the remainder of the requirement can be satisfied by onsite private park and private open space. and the remainder of the requirement can be satisfied by onsite private park and private open space. Based on this rate, the city has determined the applicant must pay to provide zero-point-two-eight acres of park and loop fees equivalent to approximately seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents. The remaining required zero-point-two-two acres will be provided onsite through private park amenity area as previously described on the earlier slides and through the private balconies on each unit as permitted by city code. And they are providing zero-point-two-four acres of private park open space onsite, which is slightly more than the remaining requirement of zero-point-two-two acres, so they do not have to provide any more parkland acreage and will just have to pay zero-point-two-eight acres of park and loop fees. Next slide, please. The applicant will have to pay the following planning development impact fees. The Midtown Park and Loop fee that was just previously described, and a public art fee which equals one-half of one percent of the project development cost that is based off the construction valuation. Both of these fees are collected prior to building permit issuance. Other fees collected by other departments such as engineering are described in the attached resolution and the conditions of approval as number one-hundred-and-six. Next slide, please. The project was reviewed by the planning commission on February twenty-second this year and received a recommendation for approval to the city council with a vote of four yays and two nays with one commissioner absent. The meeting minutes are summarized and included as attachment E to the packet. At the hearing, approximately twelve public comments were received from members of the Jane Center of Northern California voicing various concerns about the proposed project and traffic and parking concerns in the main street area and the need for a community meeting. As a result, the planning commissioners made a separate recommendation for a neighborhood meeting to be scheduled prior to the city council hearing and independently recommended that the city council take action to have a parking study done on Main Street. The applicant held the community meeting on March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and a neighborhood notice was sent by the applicant. Approximately ten members of the Jane Center were in attendance, and the meeting provided an opportunity to discuss the project and state housing laws and included a question and answer session. The applicant's attorney has sent a letter to members of the city council on Monday, April third, and a copy will be included in the record and was uploaded onto the city's website on this agenda date as an additional attachment. In regards to the public noticing for the city council hearing, a notice was published in the Milpitas Post and the city's website and the planning department's online public forum webpage. A sign was placed on the property at least twenty-two days prior to this hearing on March thirteenth. The city also mailed out one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-one postcards informing residents and property owners around one-thousand feet of the project site, twenty-one days before this hearing date. To date, two comments have been received for the project. One was a letter of opposition from the Jane Center of Northern California, and the other was a general comment letter from Valley Water. Both of these comment letters are included as attachment G to this packet. Next slide, please. Lastly, the project has been carefully analyzed against state law, the Milpitas general plan, the Milpitas Midtown specific plan, and the zoning ordinance, which includes findings that include a compatible design with neighboring properties, consistency with goals and policies of the Milpitas zoning ordinance, Milpitas general plan, and Midtown specific plan. For components of the project that are not consistent with the zoning ordinance, they have been rectified per the allowable waivers for state density bonus law as discussed earlier in the presentation and are detailed in the agenda report. Lastly, the project meets the conditions of Government Code Section six-six-four-seven-four regarding subdivision law and the subdivision map act. Next slide, please. The project is exempt from CEQA per Section one-five-three-three-two of the CEQA guidelines, which is commonly used for infill development projects as the project site is under five acres and is surrounded by existing developed utilities, infrastructure, and will not cause any significant impacts to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. And the project site does not hold value to any endangered or threatened biological species. The prepared CEQA memorandum is included as Attachment B, and the supporting technical studies are in Attachment C. Additionally, the project is exempt per Section one-five-one-six-eight Program E I R because the project is a residential project that is generally consistent with the buildup projections of the updated twenty-ten Midtown specific plan, which analyzed the development of up to one-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-two new dwelling units in this area. And since twenty-ten, only twenty-four residential units have been built in the Midtown area from the Milpa Townhome mixed-use project at two-sixty South Main Street. Next slide, please. In closing, staff recommends the city council opening a public hearing to receive comments. Move to close the public hearing. Consider the exemptions in accordance with CEQA and adopt a resolution recommending city council approve a site development permit number S D twenty-two dash zero-zero-zero-seven conditional use permit number U P twenty-two dash zero-zero-zero-three vesting tentative map number M T twenty-two dash zero-zero-zero-three density bonus permit number D B twenty-two dash zero-zero-zero-two tree removal permit number T R twenty-two dash zero-zero-fourteen and environmental assessment number E A twenty-two dash zero-zero-zero-five subject to the findings and conditions of approval. This concludes staff summary of the project. Thank you for your time. I'd also like to introduce Leah Beniston, Senior Vice President of Entitlements for the True Life Companies, as well as Project Engineer Chris Gunther from McCann Safts and Brian Winter from Legal Firm Miller Star and Regalia. We're all there in person to help answer questions for the project. And as you know, Director Ned Thomas mentioned, the applicant has prepared a few slides they would like to present when you think is the right time. Thank you again, and additionally, a few other city department managers also available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Christina, and also thank you, Planning Director Ned Thomas. So now I am going to open the public hearing and call for comments.
I'm sorry?
Actually, yes, I do want to hear from the applicants. So applicants? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Leah Beniston, Senior Vice President of the True Life Companies. I'm pleased to be here with you this evening. One correction, we do not have our civil engineer here tonight, but I think I can answer most questions needed. I am here with Scott Monard, our Executive Vice President, and Brian Winter from Miller Star Regalia, our legal counsel. So if there's any questions that you would like them to address later, we'd be happy to do so. I will not go through in the same detail that Christina did. Thank you, Christina, for your very detailed staff report. We appreciate the recommendations from the planning commission for approval and the clear and concise reporting in the staff report. I'll run through these slides real quickly because it mirrors Christina so closely. Next slide, please.
Thank you.
This particular slide is here just to show site context. Our site is that little yellow square in the middle called site, and the arrows indicate, you know, can't read it very well, but the longest arrow goes a one mile to the barge station and a half mile to the Great Mall, and there's bus stops currently right across the street and on the street across from our project. So this is a transit-oriented development, and it's a best form. Next slide, please. I just wanted to give you an idea of the site plan. Again, the majority of these homes face South Main Street, so it'll be a nice walking atmosphere. You're not looking at many garage doors from the public way. We luckily have a rectangular site, and so having this park and common open space directly in the center when you enter the main entrance has been a perk. I must say that this is our fifth project in the city of Milpitas, and we have never had such a centrally located common open space, so we're quite happy to have that there. Next slide, please. This is again just a typical elevations front and back. We can move on. These are the residential metrics. Again, I don't think I'm going to read them all out to you, but the True Life Company spends its time and its mission is to provide attainable housing for families. So we don't stray far from the three-bedroom, two-and-a-half, three-bath scenario in all of our projects. And because land is such a scarcity, we're densifying that. We've come into putting these three bedrooms and two-and-a-half bathrooms with living space in three stories, living above a two-car garage. The garage is either side-by-side or tandem, which you've seen in all of our other projects as well. We do have, you know, assigned spaces, again, two spaces, that's one-hundred-and-fourteen spaces and two car garages and dining guest spaces onsite that are directly in front of the common open space centrally located. We do have E V and accessible spaces onsite as well. As Christina did mention, we meet all the other codes of the mixed-use district except for some setback requirements because there is a public utility easement that runs along the entire frontage along South Main Street. And in order to stay out of that, we had to push our project towards the rear of the site. Next slide, please. Again, these are just artistic renderings of what our typical townhome developments look like. You can go drive through them down off of Terre Haute Court. There, people are living there now, so this will be a very similar, a very similar feel. And we have that play area right there in the center. Next slide, please. Again, one more look at the street view. So I do want to address real quickly, we did have, again, the public comments at the planning commission meeting from our neighbors, the Jane Center. This is a mixed-use district, and after we heard their comments at planning commission, we held the community meeting on March fifteenth, where again, we also sent out eighteen hundred notices and got about ten, ten people show up representing the Jane Center. So we did have a question and answer period. I would characterize it as they are concerned that their new neighbors, which would be our project, may complain about the noise and the traffic that is coming from their services. And in my opinion, we are part of the mixed-use fabric. We're proposing something that's part of the mixed-use fabric of this district and would happily enjoy having those amenities close by to walk to, whether it's the Jane Center or many of the other retail, commercial, and religious centers all up and down Main Street. So as a good neighbor, we are happy to be here in this mixed-use area. I would like to leave off with that comment and open it up to questions if you have them for me. I would like to request time to rebut later, should that be necessary. And again, we have other members here to answer questions if needed. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from your group that would like to speak?
Not at this time. We'll answer questions later.
Okay, so we will ask, I will ask the council for any clarifying questions of you. No, you guys can, I can ask, we can ask questions to the applicant, and then I can go to public forum. Does any, do any of you have questions for the applicant? Okay, now then I don't see any, and we'll go to public forum. Thank you.
Mayor, you need to open the public hearing.
Actually, there is one council member. Lynn. I'd like to ask a question of you. Councilmember Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Benison?
Correct.
Thank you for the presentation, and also thank you Christina and Ned for leading this project. It's a great-looking project. I I feel that everybody's doing the work and the findings are provided. The project is consistent with the Milpitas zoning ordinance, the general plan, and also the Midtown specific plan. I just saw the slide that you provided with the solar panels on roof. Are those to all fifty-seven units?
Yes.
All of them?
Mm-hmm.
And your appliances, are they all electricity? Is that why you have these solar panels on roof?
Well, I believe that Milpitas has all-electric ordinance, so yes, will be an all-electric development.
Okay, that's all I want to know. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanan. Vice Mayor, you have a question? A clarifying question? Hold on, hold on. My turn, my mic.
Thank you. Ms. Benison? I just want to point out, which I really like, is the way, the way you spread out the B M Rs. The nine B M Rs, I'm looking at the, the way it's spread out. It's distributed in such a way you can't distinguish that they are B M Rs. And that's what one of our policies or one of our recommendations to new developers to make sure that the B M Rs are not in one spot and they're evenly distributed in the entire development. And I would like to thank you for that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
And also the planning, our planning team. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I think does anyone else have any questions? Gary, let me see, hold on. Councilmember Barbara DiO. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for the staff. So particularly with regards to the general plan conformance, we have annotation on the report that it says this, the general plan designation for the project site is Milpitas Gateway Specific Plan, the M G S P. But since the council has not yet formally adopted the M G S P, what applied, what applies as standards are the Midtown specific plan. So what's the difference? Also, probably the end question is, should the M G S P is in effect right now, would this project pass?
Thank you, Councilman Barbara DiO. I can provide an answer for that. This is Ned Thomas, the Planning Director. So we reckon, when the council adopted the new general plan, we recognized that there would be a certain specific, or a certain amount of time where there would be a gap between the adoption of what would become the Gateway Specific Plan or the Gateway Main Street Specific Plan. In order to avoid having to go back and amend the general plan for that, we went ahead and called the, that land use designation according to what it will be called when the Gateway Plan is adopted. And of course, the Gateway Plan will replace the Midtown Plan. So until the Gateway Plan is adopted, we are going by the existing Midtown Plan standards.
Right, I understand that as clearly as on the report, but the question is, would it pass the standard of the M G S P?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Right.
Yeah. In this particular area, we don't anticipate having any change to the land use types. It will continue to be mixed use, so it will be consistent in that regard. There may be changes to the height standards or the setback standards. We haven't yet had that conversation with the council. It's scheduled for later this month when we talk about alternatives. But as far as the land use itself, it is consistent with the land in that area. I will say too that this parcel was designated as an opportunity site in the housing element of the general plan. So in that regard, it is consistent with that aspect of the general plan.
So are you saying that aside from specific setbacks and heights, that's just the difference between the M G S, the upcoming M G S P to the Midtown specific plan where, you know, the standards were met by this project?
That's correct. There will be no, I guess the best way to respond to that is that there will be no change in the general land use type of mixed use, which will allow housing as well as other types of uses at this site. So both consistent.
Right, I saw on the attachments, several pages of reports about trees. So it's, and it seems that how many trees will be cut?
Christina, do you have that detail?
Commissioner Barbara DiO, there will be thirteen ordinance-sized trees removed to allow development object, but there will be one-hundred-and-fifty-seven new trees planted.
Say that again, Christina.
Thirteen ordinance-sized trees will have to be removed to develop the project, but up to one-hundred-and-fifty-seven new trees will be planted.
Okay. When? Planted when?
Pardon, sorry, when?
Yeah, so the placement of one-hundred-and-twenty-seven trees. Yeah, so the placement of hundred twenty-seven trees, uh, they do have specific areas uh, uh, in the, the project?
So yes, those are all detailed in the landscaping plans.
Okay. All right, there's one more uh, uh, issue that I have and need clarification. So uh, this project says that it doesn't conflict with any easements, but on note, on, on the report, it says that the subdivision may involve the vacation of gas easements per P G N E requirements. What does that mean? I'm talking about on the attachment, I think it's page uh, four hundred sixty-two?
So I think regarding the potential element of the P G N E easement, you know, I think that will have to be discussed with building department and P G N E and the uh, developer at the time of the building permit application. You know, I think there's a move right to there's to um, another, you know, electric, right? So.
Right, so the, the prong is the design of subdivision or the type of improvements will conflict with easements acquired by public at large for access through or use of property within the proposed subdivision. So uh, your report uh, says that this will not happen. However, the last sentence says the subdivision may involve some gas easements uh, vacation, the P G N E. So what are we expecting uh, with regards to to at the setbacks, we're going to have an issue with P G N E easements with regards to the height, we have issues with uh, the power lines. What, what's that all about?
Uh, would Leah Benson like to comment on that?
So, Councilmember Barbara DiO, um, I believe what they're pointing out in the staff report is that because the um, because this council adopted a green building standard that requires all electric buildings, that the existing gas infrastructure will not be required for an all-electric building. And P G N E easements in which those existing gas infrastructure exists will be vacated uh, during the completion of the project.
Oh, okay. So uh, because of uh, the go electric, the easements for uh, P G N E gases terminated or, you know, banned.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's clear. I thought, you know, there, there's something that you're gonna move or you're gonna uh, deny easements on this in this report, but that's clear. Thank you for the clarification. Or if you can add anything?
No, I was just gonna agree. And no, it doesn't make a conflict. It just is an adjustment. There's a vacation of one and then we'll actually have new ones for the, that complement the location of the electric meters to each building.
Okay, mostly it will be a distance for the P G N E guy.
Correct.
I think that would be all for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Councilmember Barbara DiO. Are there any of my other colleagues that would like to ask questions of the applicant? Signa and I will ask a few. Um, I have a few to ask of you. So the first one is the fencing. Uh, I didn't see a, a picture there of a slide of the fencing because you know, the railroad tracks are right behind it and they do cause a lot of noise. I think the decibels are really high. We've had complaints from the, the, I forget the name of that that uh, unit there. Uh, but there's been complaints about that. So I, I, I'm wondering what type of fencing do you have? Do you have a sound wall? How high is it and what material is it going to be made out of?
Well, currently, we're not going to address the sound by the wa, uh, fence. It's more about the windows, the construction of that wall. So our windows will be properly rate, you know, noise rated to keep that make it ordinate, and interior noise meet the city ordinance. And then we'll, right now, in the landscape plans, you'd see that we would just have a good neighbor fence, a six-foot tall good neighbor fence for a typical residential development.
So you're having a, you are having some type of a fence, but it'll be six feet tall?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, yeah, because, and you're saying that the sound, the sound wall will not, there will not be a sound wall, but just a, what type of fence will it be?
Just a redwood fence.
Like a chain link fence?
No.
What kind of fence will it be? Wood?
Wood, redwood.
A wooden fence?
Wood fence.
Um, so do you have any concerns about um, because there are a lot of transients that go, walk through the, the railroads. We've been having problems with that. And uh, the, do you have any problems with them? Uh, any one going in there? Uh, because a wooden fence is easy to, easily to break, easily uh, gets damaged even in wind.
Excuse me, didn't mean to interrupt you. Um, under the circumstances, we do have one buffer, which is the storage yard that's between us and the actual rail line. So there is an intervening property. And then um, of course, nobody wants to invite, you know, nefarious activities, but with the eyes of the neighborhood, now it's gonna be yeah, twenty-four hours, people coming and going. And I'm hoping the H O A will, you know, have the signs posted. That's the way we would do it typically, private property. And, you know, we don't want to fence in our community to make it feel too enclosed. We want it to feel neighborly. And so I, we don't um, typically find a very tall sound wall to be good for marketing. So hopefully, the additional residents and the activity in the area will.
Yeah, but times have changed and people are concerned about their safety. So that's why I was wondering about the fencing, but I was concerned about the noise, really.
Yeah, I'd also say, as Christina mentioned, you know, the police department did have to review the plans and they didn't indicate that they had any concerns.
Okay, and uh, all right, thank you for that answer. Uh, sidewalks, uh, so are you going to replace the sidewalks that are there already in the front?
Yes, that's the city's standard condition to replace the sidewalks.
Good, because a lot of them are cracked and they're pretty old. And are you going to replace the, the infrastructure there? Because some of, in Ma, on Main Street, it, it's a very old part of town. It's been there since eight uh, late eighteen hundreds. And some of those, the infrastructure, the piping is really old. I mean, there's uh, sometimes backup that happens and I'm sure staff is aware. So ha, are you, when you develop your project, are you going to make sure that, that those conduits are
Yes, so we, it says that we will be installing an eight-inch water main and eight-inch sewer main as part of our frontage, yes.
Okay, great. Well, that's good to hear. And you also mentioned about a setback requirement. Does that set a present, a precedent for future developments? I guess this question is for Ned. If you give that setback, uh, I know that you want some type of a waiver for a setback. But won't that create a, a precedent for future developments there, Ned?
Thank you, Mayor. Not necessarily. Uh, we, we would review each project on its own merits. In this case, they're um, asking for this, the rear setback waiver, which they're entitled to under state density bonus law because they have to set their project back in the front due to the existing uh, public utility easements. Um, if we had a similar project on another site, they might ask for a similar uh, waiver in the rear. Only again, because they have to move the projects further back than we actually require in the, in the front.
Okay, that's good to hear. And um, and then this question is for the applicant. You mentioned about two-car garage. Is that for every single unit or just? So they will have a two-car garage in it? Okay, well, that, because it, I was assuming you're, you're limiting the, the parking, but just I guess that's just for the guest parking, the seventeen to nine.
Every unit has its own two-car garage.
Oh, well, then that's, that's good. At least it has two. So, so I do like that. Um, because I was getting concerned that people were gonna start parking across the street and down the street, but that's great that they're, you're having two-car garage and you are having at least nine guest parking spaces, which is good. Uh, you already mentioned, so the art piece, where will the art piece be? And you have, you already decided what type of art piece?
No, we'll be paying the fee, so we won't be instantly.
Oh, you'll be paying in Luffy.
Right.
Okay. Um, yeah, we're trying to go away, uh, get away from that, even with the park. Because it'll never get done if you, if we keep uh, you know, and this issue was brought before, brought up before, even with the parks, park fees. And um, it was one more a task, and now we've been looking into task fees because in the transit area specific, we have a task fee. And I'm wondering, I guess this question is for Ned, when are the, are, is this applicant required to pay some type of a fee, just that uh, just as a task fee? Something synonymous to that?
Thank you, Mayor. No, unfortunately, the midtown plan does not include an impact fee similar to what was um, implemented for the transit area now, the metro area. However, that's one of the things that we are contemplating as part of the update to the midtown plan is that uh, based on our experience, our, our successful experience in the metro area that we would like to, to bring forward at some future date, when the gateway plan comes to you. Uh, we anticipate having that type of impact fee, a development impact fee for the gateway area. It would be separate from the midtown fee, or excuse me, separate from the metro fee, but it would apply to new infrastructure in the metro, in the gateway area.
Yeah, I would, I would hope that that is soon because we are losing opportunities to um, to renovate Main Street. And these fees are very important. Um, so I'm sure my colleagues are uh, concerned about that. And, and I know you, you mentioned you're going to have a new midtown meeting. But um, I've been asking for this for quite a while and um, hopefully, hopefully it, it can be done. I know it takes time, but uh, we're losing opportunities. We've already had Stratford there. We've had uh, several other developments there and, and there will be more. And I just don't want us, the city, to lose those opportunities to improve the streets, sidewalks and all that infrastructure that needs to be improved on Main Street. Uh, one more, uh, you mentioned about mixed use on, on page I think it was page I can't remember the page, but um, it's a mixed use, but yet mixed use to me means that there's housing on the top and then the bottom you have businesses. Well, there are no businesses on this, this uh, project. But the area is called mixed use. Is, can you explain why that, that is?
Yes, uh, both the, uh, yes, both the specific plan and the zoning refer to it as mixed use as a land use type. However, the uh, within the mixed use zoning classification, a one hundred percent affordable, or excuse me, a one hundred percent residential project is allowed. It's, it doesn't require uh, that there be ground floor retail. We would prefer that and we often encourage it, but if a developer comes forward with a full residential project, uh, at present, we don't have an, a mechanism within the zoning ordinance to compel that to be included.
Well, to me, that defeats the whole purpose of uh, uh, making Main Street a destination place where people can shop. So um, I don't know what the, how to fix that. I don't know if we have to uh, renew the general plan or rezone or because that uh, that is supposed to be mixed use. And uh, so maybe when we have that meeting, we can discuss that. But uh, I'm gonna go ahead and let my, if somebody else want, I think the Vice Mayor wants to go ahead and chime in. Um, I think it was, hold on a minute, let me get off this one here. I think it was Anthony was next, right? Hold on. Was you? Okay, Anthony. Uh, excuse me, Councilmember Fan.
Oh, no, uh, thank you. I'll, I'll be very brief. Um, you know, I, I think we all want to make um, Main Street a, a priority um, of economic development and um, you know, booming with businesses and whatnot. But um, I, I just wanted uh, to clarify that that's a separate plan. This is uh, the um, that, that's gonna be the um, gateway specific plan uh, in regards to Main Street. Uh, this one uh, we refer to as um, you know, uh, our transit district. So um, while they are um, very interconnected, they're completely separate plans. Um, but yeah, you know, I think um, it, it's gotta go in, in hand in hand. Um, we're gonna need the housing to support these uh, businesses. That's the only way uh, it's gonna thrive. And I think that this is um, you know, w, w, one of the uh, pieces of the puzzle there. Um, that, that said, you know, I, I really uh, like the project. We haven't had um, for sale units especially um, in the transit area in a very long time. Um, or rather, um, this level of density uh, in the city uh, for sale units for a really long time. And that's something that's gonna have a huge uh, impact on um, housing affordability in the city. It's, it's essentially affordability by design. Um, we always get um, requests for, you know, s, town homes and um, apartments. But a project on this scale, um, it's really targeting um, the middle class, the working professionals um, to give them a fair shake at um, actually owning a home. Uh, and so that, that's why I think um, you know, it's a, it's a good project. Um, I'm happy to support it. Um, and I think it's really beautiful. Um, we don't really see condos that look like that. You know, we might see some, some town homes, but um, condos on, on this scale, I think, is uh, really commendable and um, I, I believe um, um, you, um, the developer will be building it too, right? Yeah, so I think that's, that's a, that's something to keep in mind. A lot of folks uh, just come up with a concept. Um, and then they, you know, sell the entitlements and the property and then they take off. But um, you know, true life has invested in Milpitas for a very long time. It's not their first project in Milpitas. They're here to stay. Um, so um, you know, I, I think that, you know, that's something to consider.
Thank, thank you, Anthony. So Vice Mayor, sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
A, after you, we're gonna go to the public hearing because we're getting into a discussion. It was just clarifying questions for the audience, uh, applicant, but do you want to go ahead? Do you want to wait till a public hearing? Okay, so we're gonna move on to public hearing now. Thank you. Thank you, applicant. This is open to public hearing.
Uh, the first card I have is Nita Ichaporia, followed by Hasu Shah, and then followed by Nitin Shah, and then Mital Kotari.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you so much. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Um, I'm here to talk about the project um, and the concerns that the Jane Center has. So I represent the Jane Center of Northern California. And I'm also a Milpitas resident for, my family's been here for over thirty years. And we're also own property on Main Street. So we're very well-versed on Main Street as well as the history of Milpitas and what the site requires. We also, just from a clarification standpoint of what the discussion was just recently, there's already two housing developments already going on in Milpitas. One has already been built south of this development. And then there's another one north of the development that's in process right now. That was on hold for a while and it's reactivated. And then we're so close to the Great Mall and of course, all the development on Montague, Abel, Main Street, all of that area. Um, and one of the units that's uh, there on Corning, I believe it's Corning um, in the back, as I said, on the other side of the train tracks, that development that happened years ago, those people do not have enough parking and they're always parking along the edge of the um, train tracks. And that, that has been a concern for a long time. But anyway, I just wanted to clarify a couple of points on that. But we're specifically here because we continue to have concerns. We appreciated the town hall meeting that the applicants held and that the city held. And because we didn't know about this project, uh, we only learned about it ten days prior to the planning commission meeting. And so we're only a month and a half into the project and we've been looking into it. So we haven't had enough time. So we haven't had enough time to get to, you know, to learn about the project. And Jane Center has been here for a long time and it's considered a landmark for the city of Milpitas. Many members have come, many mayors have come and visited us and individuals from all over the world come to see this center because it is so unique and special.
Thank you. Your time is up. Oh, actually. Have a couple of seconds.
Okay. Well, I have a whole list that, our concerns are safety, parking, noise. And to clarify, noise not just from ours, our side going from the Jane Center going to the residential, but residential coming into the Jane Center.
Okay, thank you. That's it. That's it. Thank you. Next. Yes, next. Yes, you, you can, no, no, you can't, but you can come individually. So he's your next.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I will just add to this that if we were earlier involved, if there were community meetings which were done prior, then as a Jane Center, I'm also Hasu Shah from Jane Center. I'm a board member and I was president in 2005. We have always been working with our neighbors and really want to be very supportive of all the neighbors and development of Main Street and Milpitas. If we were involved in the earlier stage, there were earlier community meetings, then we would have really worked with the developer. We appreciate the plan they have made, but it doesn't complement Jane Center, which is a unique milestone in Milpitas. It's one of the major religious place which is respected all over the world. And, and many of our community members would have loved to stay, but the kind of units, three bedrooms, three stories may not be convenient to many of the older members. They may be good for the younger members. So some mixed use facilities with certain facilities and ground floor and housing upstairs would have been very much worthwhile. And we would have worked with any developer to develop that and support that. And we hope that council considers it appropriately in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, council members for giving me the time to talk to you about our concerns. Jane Center built in 2000, it's 23 years. Still a pristine place for everyone to visit and we have kept it that way. We are very concerned. We are very concerned that this pristiness can be affected by, by the activity going on next door. I'm, I'm here because there were a lot of concerns that our legal council wanted to mention, which were not, she was not able to express because of this time. But those concerns, if the council looks at it, determines that they are, they are really true concern. I think we will be able to keep our center as pristine as we have kept it. So council, I am requesting you, please look at the concerns that our legal council has wanted to express and because of time limitation, could not. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, council members. This is Mittal Kotari. I'm the president of Jane Center this year. I've been a local resident in Milpitas for last 10 years. And I've been associated with Jane Center since then. I want to raise, I want to highlight a couple of things here, specifically Jane Center is the unique landmark on city of, for city of Milpitas. And with such large development on side of the Jane Center, we are concerned that it will block the Jane Center and diminish the aesthetic beauty of the Main Street. We have variety of events that we operate and mainly on over the weekends. With the multiple events that occur annually and one of our big events is pollution that goes over like 16 to 30 days. Extensive number of members visit during that time and we are concerned about the safety of our members with the density of these townhomes that will increase additional parking challenges for our community members as well as the safety of our children's visiting centers over the weekend. We request, well, we request that at least we have a fence, but a huge fence, like at least eight feet or more fence between the townhomes and the Jane Center. Also, the request is if there is an additional space left between the townhomes and the Jane Center, that will be appreciated. And lastly, we ask city council to really consider this project. And whether it's best use of, and just check like, is it the best use of this property? What can be done to best protect the area, the business and Milpitas as whole? So our request is to reconsider this and at least defer it for time being so that we can at least really review it in details. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other one, anyone else that would like to speak from the public? Mr. Montemeyer.
Voltaire Montemeyer, Milpitas. I'm a, a Main Street, Main Street person. I, I'm, I always go to, wait, wait, St. John's in other words, it's very close to this probable development. And I'm, what will I worry about? Maybe not because I, I heard demolishing established place already there. But I think it's, it's resolved. It could be the, I don't want to mention the eminent domain, but we're after developing Main Street. If, if this outstanding project, then we'll take it and I commend. And if, like in my imagination, that someday Main Street will be like kind of a Santana row and in 24 hours or many mayor majority of the hours of the day, people are walking. So I'm glad if I go to St. John's and I see people walking in the 24 hours, night and day. So in other words, I will see and it's hard to wait and see because we have to decide. I believe it's being studied. All, all, all the regulations is, has been cleared. So and I, I heard the other sides also and we'll see, we'll take, we'll consider them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I have one hand via Zoom. Two hands now. The first is Albert Lester.
Hey, you may proceed, Albert. Hello, Albert. Albert, you may proceed. Let's go on to the next one.
The next is Yogesh Babna and then followed by Kirid Bhavishi.
Yogesh.
Yes, hi. My name is Yogesh Babna. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. And I'm also a volunteer leader from Jane Center. As members mentioned that the Jane Center is a landmark building. It is not a commercial. It is not a residential, but it is a religious place for Jane religion. And the city of Milpitas is very popular and very famous worldwide, particularly in nation, just because of this landmark building. Today's, thank you to all of you that presentations and all the details that you guys share. I would like to raise three concern here. Number one is the guest parking. You guys are telling that this is 57 townhomes for the midtown area where three bedroom homes are there and you are attracting the family members, family oriented people. So the social, looking at the social orientation on this neighborhood, we have very much concerns about the parking. Nine guest parking is too low and we as a next door neighbor all have a feeling that it's going to be burden on us. And that's vice versa. So that's really an issue for us. The number two is safety, security. I think the proposals, what we have seen is definitely lacking all the walls and the fans and how you want to provide the details about the neighbors and about the backside. So that's second concerns. And third concern is about the, the, the overall traffic reports and parking. So this, this whole neighborhood is lack of parking all the time. We faced it and adding 57 plus multiplied by two, meaning 120 cars plus the guests coming and going, we are adding really big congestion here. So with that said, I think we have to review this parking issues and the traffic issues as well. On the same time, like a couple of my members mentioned that in, we are just into this particular project in last one and a half months. And that's not enough time for a big community like us. And so we would request.
Thank you very much. Okay, next.
Next speaker is Kirid Bhavishi.
You may proceed.
Hi, my name is Kirid Bhavishi. I'm also volunteer for Jane Center. So as you know, the, we know about this project just a month and a half ago. And then because of we raised the concern, then there was a community meeting and it was held. But as I see that still the Jane Center community is not totally familiar with the project and we request that there can be a one town hall meeting before the city council approve this project. There are some safety concern between two properties where the ray, the fencing height six feet is, I think, not enough because of the children playing around and they can jump over six foot fencing. I think it should be raised to eight feet or beyond. And also the sound between two properties, I think whatever the mechanism added between in the windows on the track side, it should be added also on the Jane Center side. So then there is a sound barrier between two properties and that can keep, you know, the sound between two properties safe on both sides. So those are the concerns. But I would request council to consider a town hall meeting with the Jane Center before approving this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next member.
Next is Albert Lester. You may proceed, Albert.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Albert Lester with the Northern California Carpenters Local Union 405. And it's great to see that we have great projects coming into our city, Milpitas. But also going to think about the workforce is going to build this project in the community. I here to speak about the area, the need of area labor standards. Implementation of the city of Milpitas, which include liberal wage, healthcare, apprenticeship, local hire, and the need of a responsible contractor. It's important to have a liberal wage because it helps our working men and women be able to balance their wages with the current inflation that has skyrocketed in the last two years. To be able to afford rent in the community and provide basic needs for their families. Since healthcare is a necessity, for all humans, we cannot have our neighbors not go to the sick, not seek the medical attention because their employer does not provide healthcare benefits instead of becoming a burden to our system. Our pension programs, it provides a path away from minorities, women, our youth into the construction industry. It gives a working class citizen the skills and craftsmanship to build a project and also a shot to American dream. By hiring locally ensures that our citizens have more time to spend time with their families and being involved in a community. Instead of spending time, instead of spending time on the road. I would like to ask the community, community and elected officials, where are we doing to ensure that we're protecting our workforce by implementing area labor standards in our city and by promoting a responsible contractor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Ash.
I have no additional hands raised.
Okay. That is it. So now we are going to close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Oh, actually, I'm not even going to give it, ask for a vote. I'm just going to go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to council discussion so we can wrap up what we decide to do. We'll have Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a clarification for Ned or Christina. Can you briefly address, just briefly, Ned, address? These are several that I need, I need some feedback on. Noise, parking, safety, fence and window insulation. Can you just briefly touch on this items, Ned? Or Christina? Thank you.
Sure. For the, and Christina, please, when I'm done, if there's anything I missed, please add. So for the noise, there will be temporary noise during construction, of course. However, generally speaking, I believe residential neighborhood will be more quiet than the commercial uses that are currently there. For parking, the proposed project meets the parking standard, the city's parking standards. And as was discussed in the presentation, the state density bonus law actually is the standard that applies here and no, well, let me start with a, for a fact, as was discussed by the applicant, each of the units will have a two car parking garage. And it's my understanding that they will be required to be used for parking rather than storage. The applicant may be able to clarify that, that, that would be enforced through the HOA. And then there are the additional guest parking spaces. Under the state density bonus law, no guest parking is required at the site. However, the applicant recognizing the need for guest parking is providing the spaces as described. For the safety fence, it is typical that developments will have what's called a good neighbor fence, which is a six foot tall fence. This is the city standard for fences between properties. Earlier, we talked about a sound wall. However, in, in other developments and other areas of city similar to this, we have found that sound walls are not desirable because there's often a, if it's a masonry wall, for example, there's often a problem with graffiti. So the, again, the, the standard requirement is a six foot wood, solid wooden fence. And then for the windows, because there, it is recognized that there will be sound from trains in particular along the back of the site typically, and I, Christina, you can clarify this, I believe there will be a requirement for the windows. Well, actually, it's in the building code. The windows will be required to have a certain amount of sound attenuation to provide a level of quietness within the dwelling units consistent with the city's noise ordinance. And as on a personal note, I have those windows at the house where I stay in Milpitas and those windows work. So I, I can personally attest to the, the sound attenuation of those types of, of windows. I would like to point out to last of all, that although the, the back of the site does face the railroad tracks, as was mentioned in the presentation, there actually is a mini storage development that sits between, that is wedged between this property and the rail line, railroad line. So the, and I mention that only because the, those, the back of those houses do not directly abut the railroad tracks. They, they actually abut a mini storage site. So there, there is a buffer there as well.
Ned, my last question is, the best use of this property? And touch on SB Senate Bill 330, because this is, this is mixed use. But they're coming in with the residential development and and I know I understand what the mayor is saying that mixed use should have retail. But the thing is, this is a residential and based on SB 330. Briefly explain that, please.
Yes, SB 330 is in essence, I guess, simply stated, is a streamlining act. So it provides that a development such as this will first submit a preliminary application to the city, which we re-review and provide initial feedback to the developer. And that feedback is based on what are called objective design standards. One of the items that came before the council recently was a, a formal set of objective design standards that you have adopted. Now, this particular project meet, would meet those objective standards. But they were not yet adopted as this came forward. So we applied those to the objective standards within the zoning ordinance that we, that we do have. And it meets those objective standards. Following that, then the applicant will submit a formal application that Following that, then the applicant will submit a formal application that theoretically incorporates any feedback that they've received from staff on the preliminary application. And then we move that forward. I actually, as a planning director, I very much like the SB three thirty applications because it is very clear what is expected by the city, what the developer needs to do and what the process will be. And I mentioned that it's a streamlining act, so it does limit the number of public hearings that can be held for any uh particular project. In this case, this is the second public hearing, so we're well within the five required uh public hearing items. I'm glad that you brought up the 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 question of mixed use. I did want to clarify that along Main Street, under the existing Midtown Plan, there is an area along Main Street that does require ground floor retail. It's the area that's closer to the uh T intersection at Sarah Way and Main Street. And within the existing Midtown Plan, there is a requirement for ground floor retail. However, it's limited in scope and it doesn't extend down to this area because it's quite a bit further south. So when we talk about mixed use in this area, we're actually looking at really a mix of uses within the neighborhood itself, and those mixes in this case are horizontal. Where you have, um this is a very good example, as you look up and down this side of the street, as was mentioned, um we have a, there's a currently a mixed use development on the corner that will have a retail component at the corner and several town home units, very similar to this project. Next to that is a Taco Bell. Next to that is the Jane Center. Next to that is a housing develop. Next to that is the car wash that uh has been approved, and next to that is a veterinary clinic, and next to that is a park. So that is a mix of uses, which is very different than you would see in a residential, other residential neighborhoods in other parts of the city, which are strictly residential and you have only homes. So in this case, when we talk about mixed use, it's not each project, but it's a mix of uses along the entire street.
Uh Ned, my second to the last question is uh I know if I remember correctly, because of SB three thirty, there is a, there's, we are obligated to respond to a developer doing a housing development. Is it sixty days or, yeah, please correct me? Because I know there's like, we have to do it in certain amount of time, number of days.
Oh, either City Attorney or Christina, do you know, I'm not uh familiar with the time, the exact time requirements of SB three thirty. I do know that it limits us in the number of uh hearings that we can have, but I don't know that there's a specific timeframe. Um there is a permit streamlining act that, and we always meet this, where we respond to the initial application within thirty days and we met that timeline.
Yeah, so I think that's what I was thinking about. Well, thank you. I hope that clarifies most of the items that I brought up. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ned.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other council members? Saying that. Gary, hold on a minute.
Thank you, Mayor. So was the concerns of the Jane Center ever addressed by city staff and applicant?
Thank you, Councilmember Barbara Dio. Yes, we became aware of some of the specific um concerns by the Jane Center at the Planning Commission meeting. And so the applicant agreed to host a community meeting. A couple weeks later, uh it was held here at the communities, the, actually, the senior center. And we met for a little over an hour and answered all of the questions and attempted to address their concerns that were raised or similar to the concerns that were raised tonight.
All right. So uh you know, I I was listening when Vice Mayor uh you know, asked staff with regards to the sound wall, fence, and the mixed use. And all, and correct me if I'm wrong. What I've heard is uh with regards to the sound wall, yes, because it's a standard uh and the reason why we're not considering it is because of the threat of graffiti. In regards to the fence, yes, it's consistent, six feet under the plan. Uh and so we're going to put it six feet, right? But I understand that you're all technical about the specifications on on these specific plans and uh you know, these regulations, but wouldn't it be prudent to uh have a deviation? Since we have a concern uh with regards to these issues, you know, they will be neighbors for forever. Right? And uh you know, this simple deviation, if we can uh uh prove conditional permits, not saying on this project, because you know, they're legally entitled because of the state density rule, but the discretion of having some deviation of standards as as we keep on uh hearing and and repeating on some concerns of a neighbor. But what's wrong with uh uh an increase of two feet, you know, is is it legitimate? You know, as they said, you know, there will be children. Uh it will be uh it will be uh an area where there will be a good uh substantial traffic with how many, how many units of of uh uh you know, a development housing we're producing. Wouldn't it be fine to consider that? I think that the question uh either to the staff or the applicant, a sound barrier and at least two more feet of fence, would it be too much to ask?
Thank you, Member Barbara Dio. Um I just wanted to add that the purpose of SB thirty, right, is we cannot force any development standards that were not adopted at the time of the pre-application, which was April twenty two. So if the applicant would agree to maybe raid a neighbor fence from six to eight feet, we can maybe, and if they agree to that, we can change that as a kind of approval. And then we could, you know, enforce that during the building permit review. Um the wall is also going to be dependent on the applicant agreeing or not, but I'm not sure it'd make quite a difference, right? If both buildings, if the Jane's taller than eight feet, right, then the sound might exceed that. But once again, right, we can only enforce standards that are adopted in our code. We cannot force developers to, you know, um incorporate more than is um, you know, allowed unless, you know, whoever agrees to.
All right, I'll put it this way, a request. If uh.
Would, would you like to um make a comment or what? Let, I'll let Barbara Dio, Councilmember.
No.
Okay. Um I think there's a mixture of um conflating of issues going on here. So let me just clarify. We propose, as the staff report clearly uh recites, a conforming project. We prefer the good neighbor fence for a residential environment to be friendly and welcoming. Yes, you do divide properties with fences, but whether it's a six-foot fence or an eight-foot fence, it's, our buildings are three stories and the, the noise is less coming from our units outward than it would be all the environmental noise coming in. So that's city's noise standards have to do with quietness inside a home, you know, decibel levels. And so that's what I was saying. Our windows will be rated to meet building code that will allow the residents inside the units to not be impacted by exterior noise, whether it is our neighbor's noise or a railroad noise or a storage facility noise or the South Main Street traffic noise. So our project will meet building code for interior noise standards due to the way it is constructed. So I think the idea that our conforming project is going to create any type of additional traffic or noise concerns is not actually the issue here. The issue is, and I would like to bring up my presentation because I have some slides for this, is that the current operations of the Jane Center, I believe, and I would suggest, are exceeding the capacity of their particular property and their use. They have a conditional use permit that was given to them in nineteen ninety-eight, which limited their occupancy to three hundred and five people. And if you look at the uh, listen to or read the minutes from the Planning Commission hearing, they had several members come up repeatedly saying that they have grown twenty percent year over year. And they've also indicated in the minutes of that meeting and Planning Commission that they have up to three thousand people coming to some of their events. So if you could go to the next slide, please. This is the juxtaposition of all the properties. And here, as I've seen, shown off the top of the page, this use, conditional use permit was given to the Jane Center in nineteen ninety-eight, and it has a three hundred and five person capacity. Then in two thousand and seventeen, they were given amendment to their conditional use permit for new classrooms, and I'm paraphrasing, I'm sure there was more to it. And it says that their parking should not exceed a hundred and eighteen spaces. Counting the spaces on site, they have a hundred and eighteen spaces on their property. But if you go to the next slide, please. This is one of their entrances on March fifth at one of their events. You can see they have a sign up that says parking lot full. Next slide, please. North side of their property, parking lot full. Next slide, please. As the properties go north, this is our, which is the project property. There's, this is a weekend, there's parking on private property, both in the grass and in the parking lot. Next slide, please. As you can see here, they put up signs down the street from their project saying J C N C parking. This is off-site. I am not suggesting anything about whether or not this is um permitted or not. I'm suggesting that they've exceeded their hundred and eighteen spaces. So we believe as a conforming use, we are a good neighbor. I think that James Center being concerned that we're going to cause the problem is not the problem. The problem is, they are successful. They are a good uh member of your community. They are doing great things. As I said, they're attracting a lot of great press and a lot of excitement and a lot of attendance. But that attendance is what's causing the problem. Next slide, please. It's hard to see, but if I can zoom in, there's a sign on that side as well. These are all different properties. But there's parking all the way down the street, fully parked. Next slide, please.
I think.
And again, so my point here is that noise is not coming from our particular use, it's coming from the existing uses. And our homeowners association will be monitoring our parking, our rules, and be, tell any new homeowner will be told what the rules to the CCNRs and the HOA are, and that will be monitored. I have no idea who is monitoring the Jane Center and their operations, but I think that is where this problem is coming from.
All right, thank you. Well, if you continue to show the slides, I might be misled to uh believe that it's the Jane Center who's asking for a permit. All I'm asking is a consideration. I'm telling you that you will be neighbors with this uh uh Jane Center for the longest time. And right? If you say no, because you're so technical and say, hey, I, I, we were able to uh conform this regulation and that, that's the request I'm trying to ask, which I can exercise my discretion on my one vote on this project. So thank you for preparing the slide. You made your point, as I said, you almost misled me. But that's the request, you know, there is a concern from your neighbor and uh they claim that they lack. Have you heard uh Jane Center saying this appropriate project? He said, listen to us. We only have ten days prior to the Planning Commission when we were notified. That's all you're asking. So if you say no and staff recommends approval, then I'll exercise my discretion on this project. But that's all. We are talking here, as I understand, rules are rules, but neighbors will be forever. But that's just my point. If you say no.
No, I'm not saying, I haven't said that yet. We could consider two feet of wood fence, so maybe we could go from six to eight feet wood, but we would not be entertaining any type of cement or other masonry type of fence. But maybe eight feet of wood would be acceptable.
That's fine, it's your call. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barbara Dio. Any other of my colleagues want to make any requests? And the applicant is um, does have a right to any rebuttal from the public. If you want to do any rebuttal from any of the public speakers. And now's your time if you want to do that.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, Brian Winter, familiar, Miller Star Regalia, uh on behalf of True Life. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I just wanted to make a few brief points. We fully intend and desire and will be a good neighbor um in Sunnyvale. What we have heard from the Jane Center, sorry, I said, uh Milpitas. What we've heard from the Jane Center tonight is, um, I think, at this point, uh speculative uh assertions, assertions about impacts that the project would have, uh but no actual evidence to support that. In fact, all of the evidence in the record is to support the fact that this is going to be a great project with no impacts on the community. Um if this project, of course, does, as is articulated well in your staff report and is set forth in a letter that we provided to the city yesterday, occurring in a legal context um under SB three thirty, the Housing Accountability Act and the Density Bonus Law, um all of which um converge to to compel approval of the project. We hope you'll do that tonight. Um I'm happy to answer any other questions, but I did want to make that brief point. Thank you.
Thank you. Of course, Mayor Chua. Hold on a minute.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any question and it's so. We have two good neighbors here. We have the True Life, who has been developing good projects here in our city. And we have the Jane Center, who has been with us for a long, long time. And they've been good neighbors as well. So we are sitting here, I mean, in the middle, trying to decide for you, you, I mean, for both of you. You know, and then we have the SB three thirty that we have to abide by. And we cannot really force based on SB three thirty. We cannot force the developer to, even though we request, we cannot force them to do it. So I'm looking at it at a different angle. And I'm gonna ask Ned, Planning Director. Ned, what if uh instead of raising the two feet, just in case, I mean, the the developer don't want to do it? Can we put trees on the side of the Jane Temple? We put the trees to block it? And what type of trees can we put there? You know, to raise it up or do it by trees? Not on the side of the development, but on the side of the Jane Temple? Is that a good recommendation?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate your comment. And uh yes, on the developer's side, there are trees that are, uh in addition to the fence, there are trees, as you saw in the landscape plan, along that side, along all three sides of the property. If the Jane Center wishes to uh add um landscaping, that would be at their discretion. We often uh advise property owners of that when they have um issues, similar issue, you know, in any area of the city, similar issues with their neighbor and privacy issues. So, but that would be, because it's on the Jane Center side, that would be at their discretion. They would be if there's space there with their parking lot. They they could plant additional trees.
What type of trees can be suitable for that type of purpose?
Hmm, it would depend on the space that's available between the property line and the edge of their parking. They could likely, I'll look really quickly as we're talking. It it would likely be, you know, shrubs, like, that could grow taller, or they could also do trees. So, but that would, again, be at, they're completely at their discretion. The city doesn't require that or have a recommended plant list.
Yes.
Director Thomas and, sorry, Councilmember Chua, would like to point out on page Plan Sheet L three, it does show a significant amount of trees already aligning next to that um project site next to Jane Center. I haven't counted, but there's a lot.
Is, is it going to be higher than six feet?
They are twenty-four inch box trees, so.
Are they high? Is it?
They would be.
Going to? How tall can they go?
Yeah, those would be regular sized trees, so they would probably go up to twenty, twenty-five feet.
Oh.
And plus the shrubs. So I believe, Christine, if you have the landscape planner, I believe it's trees and there is, are also shrubs along there. Or perhaps um the applicant can clarify what they plan to plant.
In, in show the, the rendering. Can you show the, the rendering? Can you please show the, the slide?
Oh, and Vice Mayor, while we're pulling that up, I am looking at the air photo on my screen in Google Earth. And there is, you know, most parking lots in cities will have a landscape, landscape strip along their parking lot. And indeed, the Jane Center does have, it looks like it's about five to six feet in width. And there are small, there are some trees there already and there is, there are some shrubs. So those could be replaced with taller shrubs if they desired.
So Christina, is this, are these trees going, will go outside as 20 feet? Is that what you're saying?
They are supposed to be 24 inch box trees all around the edges.
But I'm not talking about the width, I'm talking about the length.
You know, I'm not quite sure. I'm not sure if Ms. Madison wants to comment on that. You know, we don't, you know, I'm not sure we have a height requirement, but yeah.
Right, yeah, no, I mean, again, I'm not a landscape architect. That's why we have this plan set, but usually 20, 25, as Christina was indicating, 30 feet is a mature sized tree. It will take probably, you know, 10 years to get there, but it won't get there.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you. So that's what I could say and thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. And I don't see anyone else. So we are going to deliberate now on the vote. Is there a? Is there a wish to approve or not approve? Is there a motion on the floor? Is there a motion on the floor? Vice Mayor, hold on a minute.
I have the mic, correct?
Okay. Councilmember Hanan.
Thank you. Yes, I, I know that the concerns of James there, but if developer meets all the criteria for Main Street and we do want to see Main Street develop in a better looking town for Milpitas. So with that, I am going to motion to adopt the resolution to approve the site development permit number SB 22-0007, conditional use permit number UP 22-003, vesting tentative map number MT 22-003, density bonus permit number DB 22-0002, tree removal permit number TR 22-0014, an environmental assessment number EA 22-0005, subject to the conditions of approval. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Is there a second? Was seconded by Anthony Fan, by Councilmember Fan, excuse me, and we will go ahead and was moved by Councilmember Hanlin, seconded by Councilmember Anthony Fan. Now we are going to go to the vote. Councilmember Barbadillo. Council, Vice Mayor Chua. Sit down.
Hi, with the notation of looking into trees planted on both sides. Thank you.
Councilmember Leon.
Yes.
Councilmember Fan.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye and I just, I do want to make a comment. SB 330 has tied, it has superseded a lot of our ability to make decisions on the parking. And if we do not, the state supersedes the city, the local on, on the parking criteria. So in essence, we have to allow that, the, the ratio of the parking. Because if we don't, the city will be sued by the state. So I'm going, as I mentioned, so I am an aye as well. And so now it is four to one. So the item has been approved. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 18.
Thank you, Mayor Montano. This item is tabled to a future meeting. I can read the title if you'd like for the public. So it was conduct a public hearing and introduce an ordinance amending Title III, Business and Professions of the Milpitas Municipal Code to add Chapter Nine, Permits for Retailers of Tobacco Products. And again, this has been tabled to a future meeting because we're still trying to work out some terms with the county who is supposed to be administering the program.
So there's no action to be taken on this one. Next one is community development, 19.
So item 19 is receive a housing report and presentation. And we have Alex Andrade, our Director of Economic Development, and Robert Musalem, our Housing and Neighborhood Services Administrator, presenting this item. Thank you.
Alex.
Good evening. Give me a sec while I get my speaking points here in order. Good evening, Mayor Montano, Vice Mayor Chua, and City Councilmembers, Alex Andrade, your Director of Economic Development. Tonight, I'm here as your interim Housing Lead. And the presentation will focus on the, these housing work program, which really focuses on promoting safe, affordable, sustainable and inclusive communities for all Milpitas. I'd like to start with giving you a housing update. You may remember that back in mid-December, the City Manager's Office issued a letter of support, HUD, as it relates to maintaining affordability for the residential units over at Sunny Hills. And also, as you're aware, JMK Investments, the owner of Sunny Hills Apartments, had a contract with HUD that was set to expire at the end of February 28th. So I'm pleased to report that HUD has renewed the contract with JMK for another five years and that, that'll go through September or February of 2028. So I'd like to move on and introduce to you the housing team. There's a couple of members of our housing team that you know, like Robert Musalem, he's our Housing and Neighborhood Services Administrator. Also Sarah Boultra, who presented last fall. She's our Senior Administrative Analyst. Michelle Silva is our Administrative Analyst Two, who you have not yet met. And Tiffany Ye is our Administrative Analyst One. She just started about a week ago, so she, it has been a great addition to the team. Robert is going to give you most of the presentation tonight and the rest of the team, including myself, will give you, will be here for any questions that we may have. Can we move on to the next slide, please? So tonight's presentation is really going to focus on the housing work plan. It's on the screen at the moment. I'm not going to read the bullet points in interest of time, but I do want to make the statement that this housing team is engaged in an immense and vital body of work for the Milpitas community. We're very proud of the work that they're doing, a lot like economic development. They're a small but mighty team. So the agenda report that you've read in preparation for tonight's meeting, highlights as well as this presentation will highlight the most important aspects of the housing work plan. Next slide, please. So I want to make the statement related to the dissolution of the redevelopment agencies, which happened over 10 years ago. That created an enormous challenge in the preservation and development of affordable housing because tax increment funding went away. And I think we all know this, which has been happening for several decades. The Bay Area has been in a housing crisis for a really long time. But with the dissolution of redevelopment agencies, it's exacerbated the lack of adequate housing options. When you take that and couple it with the pandemic, it resulted in an increase in unhoused individuals, which has led to cities developing social service solutions at the local level. As you'll see in tonight's presentation, the investments the city has made over the past few years consist of garnering over $6.4 million in funding, as well as an investment of over $1.8 million in unhoused and supportive service-related activities that benefit Milpitas residents. Next slide, please. This will be my next slide before I hand it over to Robert. I think it's important to touch on the housing element because of course it was before you not too long ago. But just as a reminder, the housing element provides an analysis for communities' housing needs at all income levels and strategies to respond, to provide for those housing needs. It's a key part of the city's overall general plan. In the past, housing elements used to be updated every five years. Now it's every eight years. And of course, the state's Housing and Community Development Department has to certify that plan. Thankfully, on January 24th, you are City Council adopted the draft housing element or the associated resolution and the general plan amendment. You also approved an amendment to the Milpitas 2040 General Plan EIR. The deadline for local decision makers to adopt the housing elements was January 31st. And as I just mentioned, we were able to meet that because you approved and adopted those documents just at the end of January. Back in February 16th, the city's housing element team met with HCD to review the final few items that needed to be addressed. And we received a favorable response. So last week, on March 30th, to be exact, we issued the seven day public notice per HCD's transparency requirements. And so by the end of this week, I expect to resend what is likely to be the final draft of the housing element to HCD for certification of the 101 cities and jurisdictions in the entire Bay Area. I understand there's roughly eight cities and jurisdictions that have been certified. And we heard recently that in Santa Clara County, the city of Campbell has recently received their certification. So we are hoping that we may be the second one in the county. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Robert to give you the remaining presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. If we can move to the next slide, please. The COVID-19 pandemic greatly exacerbated the need for unhoused resources in Milpitas. In fall 2020, in accordance with City Council direction, staff conducted extensive research and explored homeless outreach and basic needs services that may improve quality of life for Milpitas unhoused residents. The city's unhoused division, excuse me, the city's housing division is presently administering several unhoused services programs in the community. They are the Homeless Engagement and Access Team, or HEAT, as we refer to them. We Hope, Dignity on Wheels, who administers the mobile shower and laundry services, and additional state funding that in part could be used for unhoused services. The next set of slides will discuss each of these in more detail. Next slide, please. Thank you. In November 2020, City Council approved and directed staff to enter into an agreement for homeless outreach assessment and street-based case management services with Santa Clara County's Office of Supportive Housing. In March 2021, the county's Homeless Engagement and Access Team via Abode Services began conducting outreach to engage and provide resources to the city's unhoused residents. Since March of 2021, Abode has made 263 outreach contacts, assessed 229 individuals, and enrolled 212 clients. The approach to encampment response is cross-departmental. Housing staff also provides updates to the City Manager's Office and various city departments, including police, public works, recreation and building safety at the bi-weekly unhoused services staff meeting. Next slide, please. In December 2020, the City Council directed staff to implement a six-month pilot program with We Hope to provide weekly hot shower and laundry services for unhoused residents in Milpitas. Dignity on Wheels is a program that's operated by We Hope. City staff also arranged for the county's HEAT team to provide case management service brochures to further connect clients with a countywide network of services. Council has since elevated the pilot program to a full-time program and extended the term and funding through spring 2023. From March 2021 through December 2022, We Hope has provided 91 sessions to the unhoused community, serving over 754 clients totaling 1601 showers and 567 loads of laundry. Next slide, please. So this table presents a breakdown of each program, the amount of funding allocated, the year the funds were funded for, and the number of residents the program's actually served and the funding source. This is just sort of to give you a high-level overview of the actuals. And so I'll just pause here for a few seconds. Next slide, please. And this table presents a breakdown of each program, the amount of funding expected to be allocated, the year the funds are expected to be funded for, the number of residents the program is expected to serve, and the expected funding source. So again, I'll just pause here for a few seconds. Next slide, please. The next series of slides will discuss the city's supportive services. Supportive services are services meant to help individuals at risk of being unhoused, remain in their current housing situation. The city has significantly increased the level of supportive services it offers its residents, which include the Rent and Mortgage Relief Program, Permanent Local Housing Allocation, or PLHA, and Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG. Next slide, please. In October of 2019, City Council authorized the creation of a pilot rent relief program. As the COVID-19 pandemic began to impact the community in spring 2020, the city's existing program and established processes provided much-needed assistance to at-risk Milpitas residents. From 2019 through 2021, the city was able to fund its rent relief program with over $1 million from a combination of the Affordable Housing and Community Benefit Fund, CDBG, and multiple times through a competitive grant via the Santa Clara Emergency Food and Shelter Program. In September 2021, City Council authorized modifying the rent relief program to the Rent and Mortgage Relief Program and approved the use of American Rescue Plan Act dollars to fund the program. Per Council direction, 75% of the approved allocation would be directed towards rent relief and 25% of the approved allocation would be directed towards mortgage relief. Next slide, please. The Rent and Mortgage Relief Program is administered by FORWARD, who is selected via a competitive selection process. In December 2022, the city officially launched the rent portion of the Rent and Mortgage Relief Program. To be eligible for rent relief, applicants must be a resident for at least six months, have experienced an economic hardship due to COVID-19, and be at or below 120% of the area median income. The funding is estimated to benefit 130 households. To date, FORWARD had distributed $138,000 in rent relief to 36 households. In March 2023, the city officially launched the mortgage portion of the Rent and Mortgage Relief Program. To be eligible for mortgage relief, households must have experienced an economic hardship due to COVID-19, currently own one residential property, and it must be a primary residence, and has not received any other forms of governmental or private assistance for the same period requested, and be at or below 150% of the area median income. This program is estimated to benefit 14 households. Next slide, please. Permanent, a local housing allocation. In 2017, Governor Brown signed SB 2, the Building Homes and Jobs Act, which created a recording fee on real estate documents to increase the supply of affordable homes in California. SB 2, established at 70% of the revenue collected beginning in calendar year 2019, will go to locally administered affordable housing, otherwise known as the Permanent Local Housing Allocation, or PLHA. The funding will help cities and counties increase the supply of housing for households at or below 60% of the AMI. Specifically, it can be used to assist persons experiencing or at risk of homelessness to facilitate housing affordability and ensure geographic equity in the distribution of funds. Next slide, please. The allocation spans a total of five years from 2019 through 2023. The requirement states applicants must submit a five-year plan for the period of 2019 through 2023 and cannot apply for more than three years of the allocation in one year. Housing staff applied for the city's 2019, 2020, and 2021 entitlement in the amount of $1,017,554. The state of California released the Notice of Funding Availability in August 2022. And on November 1st, 2022, City Council adopted a resolution authorizing the funding application to the PLHA program, approving a five-year plan for the PLHA allocation of an estimated $1,431,570. Thanks to the quick work of the housing team, by February 2023, the city of Milpitas has received its award letter from the state. Of the city's estimated entitlement of over 1.4 million, the city was approved to designate 5% towards program administration. The remaining balance will be split to fund two different activities. 80% of the remaining balance will be used to create a workforce housing rental assistance program. And staff is in the process of finalizing the program details and will return to council to receive further guidance and approval in summer of 2023. And the final 20% of the remaining balance will be used to secure HEAT team funding for the next three fiscal years. Next slide, please. This slide will highlight at a very high level the community This slide will highlight at a very high level the Community Development Block Grant Program. Every year through the federal budget, Milpitas is awarded funding through the Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD. These funds are to be used for the activities that benefit low and moderate-income households. The city receives approximately six hundred thousand every year, and through a comprehensive selection process and city council approval, we disperse those funds to selected organizations. The final allocation for the next fiscal year is six hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. Staff is preparing two public hearings, one on April eighteenth and one on May second, to present the city's annual action plan for public comment and city council approval. The table at the bottom of the slide represents the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty-two funding amount and community impact. Due to the pandemic, providing more federal funding than usual in the last fiscal year, the city actually allocated over one point two eight million dollars to twenty-one programs and activities to the benefit of eighteen hundred and seventy-six residents. Next slide, please. So this table just shows the funding allocated to the various supportive services that we've just discussed, as well as additional services we accept or receive funding for. Next slide, please. Okay, affordable housing. The key to solving the housing crisis is the creation and availability of more affordable housing. Although the city is not funded for housing production, it can incentivize, facilitate, and mandate some level of affordable housing through its policies and program. The next set of slides will discuss the Affordable Housing Ordinance, the table of proposed developments uh upcoming in the city, the current below-market-rate housing program, and the city's recent housing investments. Next slide, please. In June twenty eighteen, the City Council adopted an Affordable Housing Ordinance that requires new residential developments with ten or more units to provide fifteen percent of those units for affordable housing. A minor update to the ordinance was recently adopted by the City Council in January twenty twenty two to provide the development community more clarity on how to navigate the requirements of the ordinance. Next slide, please. This table shows the list of proposed developments currently in either the application, planning, building permit, or under construction phase of development. On the left are the proposed rental developments. There are approximately six hundred and twenty rental units under development. On the right are the proposed ownership developments. There are approximately forty-four ownership units under development. These units, these unit numbers are subject to change as proposals may change through the application process. And there are also other projects currently in the pre-application phase that are not reflected here. These affordable units are all evidence of compliance with the Affordable Housing Ordinance. Next slide, please. Eventually, the affordable units shown on the previous slide will become a part of the city's below-market-rate housing program. These units are built to benefit qualified affordable housing households. Housing staff currently manages over two hundred below-market-rate ownership units, which requires intensive stat time and expertise to administer. Through compliance with the Affordable Housing Ordinance, staff anticipates an additional fifty B M R ownership units in the next three years. For the rental units, staff receives yearly reports from independent property managers who are chosen by the owners of each rental development, and staff ensures that the units are being rented in accordance with the affordability guidelines set forth during the approval process. Housing staff oversees the compliance of an estimated twelve hundred below-market-rate rental units. Next slide, please. As to the city's investment in affordable housing, the city has invested six point five million dollars in three fifty-five Sangio Court, a one hundred percent affordable housing project. Further funding for this project included a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar predevelopment loan and a two hundred and ninety-nine thousand ninety-seven dollar C D B G loan. Additional investments by the city include the proceeds of the sale of city-owned land at South Main Street, specifically parcel number one. The proceeds of the sale will be deposited into the Low and Moderate Income Housing Fund. And lastly, the city's investments reflect its commitment to maintain affordability at the Sunny Hills Apartments by reimbursing the ownership group a total of one point two five million dollars over five years for critical repairs and upgrades made to the apartments. Council also allocated two hundred thousand dollars in C D B G funding for roof repairs in twenty twenty. Next slide, please. This table shows the total supportive services funding overview, the overall funding allocated, and the various funding sources to pay for these programs. This is like an aggregate of the funding for each program. Next slide, please. And this table shows the same for supportive services, a funding overview, the overall funding allocated, and the various funding sources that have paid for these programs. Next slide. These next two slides, I will not spend a lot of time on. It's merely to show the level of work the housing team is required to administer on behalf of the city to remain in compliance with various federal and state agencies. As you can see on the on the screen there, variety of reports. Next slide. And this slide shows the various housing advisory committees and task forces that the housing team is the liaison for. Next slide, please. Okay, so next steps. There are three items up for future council discussion. For C D B G, staff will be presenting the proposed annual action plan at two public hearings, as I mentioned, the first on April eighteenth and the second on May second. For the additional state funding and P L H A, staff expects to return to the City Council in summer twenty twenty three with more details for direction. And next slide, please. And finally, our recommendation, an easy one, receive housing report and presentation. Um, that concludes our presentation. I just want to say thank you quickly to my wonderful team, Michelle and Sarah, for your hard work and support. I am now available to answer any of the council's questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert, for that presentation, and thank you, Alex, and Ann to your team. So now I will go to the public for public comment. Um, and Mr. Monti Mayor, thank you.
So let's say I'm enjoying. Yeah, oh, fantastic presentation. Uh, the recommendation should be there. Um, is this the second city? As a director and value saying, so Milpitas will be second to is that Santa Clara? Or yeah, acceptance or um approval? And all those, the grants, the funds, location, budgeting, uh chronologically, the format, I would say it's up to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Saying none. Is there anyone on Zoom?
I have no raised hands. Oh, wait, Alison McDonald.
Okay, Alison, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mayor Montano and City Council. I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Massolom and his staff, um, Small But Mighty, who have accomplished so much, and uh thank them for their hard work and um uh we really appreciate, the community really appreciates um the councils um putting funding towards things like rental assistance and the showers and the other services that were outlined as well as the um minimum requirements for inclusion of affordable housing. These were all things that did not exist in our community just a few years ago. Um, twenty seventeen, to be exact. Uh, we did not have most of these programs in place. They make a real difference to people, and I want to thank you.
Thank you for those comments. And again, it's a city council. We uh make those recommendations to staff and staff implements the council's wishes. So thank you for that. Now it's time for a council discussion on this item. Any feedback from my colleagues? Okay. I don't see. Oh, on then. Oops. Sorry, let me go one minute. All right, thank you, Maryann.
Thank you. Um, first, I would like to to thank Alex, Robert, Michelle, Sarah, and all the hard work for the very thorough presentation. Would you help me go back to page either nine or twenty-three? Okay. So I have a question on the definition of Milpitas Resource Center for five hundred thousand dollars. Alex?
Yes, I have information here that the team has actually put together. Oh, well, actually, we have definitions for day worker and help center, navigation center, recreation and safe parking, and a tiny home village, but at the moment, not for Resource Center, but perhaps Robert may be able to give us a gist of of the definition.
Um, so can I have a assistant city manager speak on that?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Lee Anne. So that was called a resource center. We we applied for state funding, and the resource center was really the day worker slash Milpitas Resource Center. So that's what the funding was applied for. Subsequent to that, uh, we did not, this was one of the things that the um homelessness task force had um recommended, but it was not one of the ones that moved forward. So that happened after we applied for the funding, which is why in the next steps, we said we would bring back that discussion to you in the summer. Because we're trying to work with the state and with Assemblymember Lee's office to determine what flexibility there is uh for that five hundred thousand.
Okay, so it will not be the Milpitas Resource Center. We don't know.
But we will bring some options back depending on what kind of flexibility we are allowed with the funding.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Because I'm familiar with the Navigation Center. Uh, they have one in Fremont. In Milpitas Unified School District, we have a Resource Center, and I don't know if this is the same definition. If it is, I'd like to know who are we serving? And what are we doing there at the Resource Center? So I will wait to hear back from you. Thank you very much. That's all I have for uh this item. Thank you, Alex and Robert, for the presentation.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Lee Anne. And you know, I I'm glad that you asked that question, Councilmember Lee Anne, because I too was a little bit confused. Is it the is it the Milpitas Unified School District Resource Center, or is it a different resource center? Is it the, is it one and the same?
It it was, uh, Mayor Montano. It was actually, I think, one of your ideas. It was the Day Worker Resource Center. Yes.
Okay, it's a day worker uh center, resource center. It was just, that's what was confusing. So, okay, thank you for that clarification. And now we're moving on to Vice Mayor Chua. Hold on.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, I just want to thank Robert and Alex and the team. Good one. This is good. It summarizes what we've been doing addressing the housing issue here in our city, and thank you. Thank you so much. I just have one request to please send the the presentation slides to all of us. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And so this item is just for, uh, just to receive the housing report and presentation, no action. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to public safety.
You could thank you, Mayor Montano. So item twenty under public safety, receive calendar year twenty twenty two, controlled equipment annual report, take public comment and questions for the purpose of community engagement, and approve proposed acquisitions for calendar year twenty twenty three. And we have our Chief of Police Jared Hernandez and Assistant Chief of Police Frank Morales uh giving the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Council Jared Hernandez, serving as your Chief of Police. Assistant Chief of Police Frank Morales will be doing the bulk of the presentation. However, I did just want to remind council of some of the background surrounding this uh this item. We, as a police department, presented to council early in twenty twenty two as required by Assembly Bill four eighty-one, which we'll explain more in a moment. But back then, uh, council had approved our existing um controlled equipment use policy, as well as reaffirmed the equipment, uh, the allowance of the equipment that we currently use in the police department. And the reason I say reaffirm is because historically, even in the absence of Assembly Bill forty-one, it has been the practice of the police department to uh seek approval of council for the purchase of certain equipment that we use, which is now deemed controlled equipment. Um, so with that, I will pass it over to Assistant Chief Frank Morales to go over the details, and we'll both be available for questions upon his conclusion.
Evening, Mayor Montano, Vice Mayor Chua, council members. Thank you for having me here tonight to present the twenty twenty-two Controlled Equipment Annual Report. Next slide, please. So uh, as I start, uh, give you guys a overview of what the report covers. Um, I'll discuss some the summary of some of Bill four eighty-one, a summary of the controlled equipment used by the Milpitas Police Department, examples of use in the city of Milpitas, and an overview of the twenty-two uh uh twenty twenty-two Controlled Equipment Report and approval for proposed acquisitions for calendar year twenty twenty three. Next slide, please. Begin with Assembly Bill four eighty-one uh was passed by Governor Newsom in September of twenty twenty one. Uh, this requires law enforcement agencies and state agencies to report their military equipment as defined in Assembly Bill four eighty-one. Uh, Assembly Bill four eighty-one also includes uh the reporting requirements for funding, acquisition, and use of the equipment. The intent behind Assembly Bill four eighty-one was to improve transparency from law enforcement agencies uh to the public and to create a system of checks and balances for procurement of use of this equipment. Some highlights of Assembly Bill forty-one include uh that it defines certain equipment as military equipment, which is also referred to as controlled equipment. Uh, this does not necessarily mean that equipment has been used or purchased uh from the military. The report requires uh information to include equipment usage, uh, maintenance and costs, internal audits, and a summary of community feedback. Finally, the report requires the approval uh for acquisition from the governing body, in this case, uh, Milpitas City Council. Next slide, please. Here are some photos of some of the controlled equipment. Uh, there are fifteen categories of controlled equipment. Uh, we do not have uh equipment in all of those categories, which I will discuss in a few minutes. Uh, the top-left picture is a photograph of our uh Winnebago, which was a recreational vehicle that was publicly available and uh converted to police use. Uh, in the middle, uh, on the right of that is the Medevac, uh, which went into service approximately five years ago. That uh before it was deployed in the field, it was brought before council, and we also hosted a community engagement events or town halls uh prior to its deployment. Picture to the right is the Medevac deployed at the V T A mass shooting in twenty twenty one. Our SWAT team members responded there in the event that our law enforcement partners needed additional equipment. Um, also in use is our U A S program that stands for Unmanned Aircraft Systems. You see one of our pilots there, Officer Ricky Falcon, uh, flying one of our drones. To the right of it is um a community event that we hosted with uh a teen academy, and the uh teen members were able to get hands-on experience with our current U A S program. Uh, the U A S program, similar to the Medevac program, uh, was brought before council. We hosted community uh events, town hall meetings to discuss uh any concerns or questions that the public may have. Finally, uh, you see a photo there of a robot on the ground. Uh, that is a recent uh purchase that is used uh primarily by our SWAT team to safely handle uh potentially dangerous uh items. All of these uh pieces of equipment provide an extra layer of safety for the public and uh for our officers. Next slide, please. This table describes the current controlled equipment that is in use by the police department. As you can see, on the left is the items, uh, unmanned aircraft, uh, robots, armored rescue vehicle, manned vehicle, specialized firearms, tear gas, distraction devices, uh, breaching equipment, uh, forty-millimeter less-lethal uh weapons, and recently we deployed uh beanbag shotguns in all the police vehicles uh in twenty twenty two. As you can see on the column on the far right, there is a description of how long this equipment has been used. And as you can see, a lot of the equipment has been used for decades. And as you can see, a lot of the equipment has been used for decades uh by members of our department. Uh, some of this equipment requires a highly specialized training um and is used by um members of our department to have uh that that training. Next slide, please. So justification for the uh Controlled Equipment. Uh, the Milpitas Police Department utilizes best practices and the most current tools and equipment to safeguard residents, uh, businesses, residents and businesses. The Milpitas Police Department is uh very active in promoting de-escalation techniques, tools, um, and other other options to reduce force uh encounters with the public. These items provide police officers with the ability to safely resolve volatile situations, which could otherwise uh result in a lethal force encounter. The department provides uh vital tools that facilitate compliance with existing policy. In most cases, there are no reasonable alternatives to achieve the same degree of civilian and officer safety. Uh, in those categories where alternate uh alternatives exist, the equipment is cost-effective compared to the available alternatives. For example, we are not able to operate a helicopter program. So we use UAS to provide us with uh real-time um uh data or real-time events as they're unfolding via the drone. Next slide, please. One thing I would like to highlight is that AB481 requires that police departments report um complaints um or policy violations. And and I can proudly report that uh when we conducted our audit, we received no complaints for the use of control equipment, and we did not identify any policy violations for the equipment that we currently have. Uh, the annual fiscal impact is approximately $42,000 um for the Controlled Equipment. This $42,000 represents a very small piece of the pie for our overall operating budget. Uh, this accounts for less than uh half a percent of our budget, um, our operating budget. Next slide, please. For the following year, uh, we are proposing the acquisition of several key pieces of equipment. The first one is the DJI Matrice 30 Series UAS. This is a newer generation um drone or UAS, which provides us with increased capabilities. Um, as you guys have all seen, uh, the recent storms provided us with some um intelligence gathering challenges. The current uh UAS equipment that we have is limited in operation when there is inclement weather. So if there's a driving, if it's very windy, there's rain, uh, we're limited because of the camera equipment that are on some of the drones. So the DJI Matrice 30 uh would enhance our abilities to uh to gather intelligence. For example, if we have unhoused folks that are along the creek, we would be able to fly this as uh there is rain or if it's windy in inclement weather. Secondly, is a Brink Lemer UAS. This is a newer UAS. Um, it has additional capabilities. Uh, for example, it can fly through glass windows, um, essentially crash and correct itself and then fly again. What this does for us is it creates an added layer of of distance and time. Uh, for example, if we're someone who's who's hostile or armed with a weapon, we have the ability to know where that person is at. We have um the ability to engage that person. The Brink Lemer drone uh provides uh a unique capability in that it provides two-way communication. So if a negotiator to the police department could actually engage with that person um via the drone. Um, and then again, that maximizes uh the safety of the public and the safety of our officers. The breaching tool that's listed here is another key uh tool. Uh, there is a significant benefit to the department and to the city in that uh this breaching tool would uh potentially minimize injuries to officers. Currently, officers use a ram. Um, I'm sure you've seen on TV, uh, that they have to use their body weight uh to to basically torque uh the the ram and hit the door. Uh, it's a heavy, it's a heavy piece of equipment, and there is a risk to the officers that use it um or potential shoulder injuries. Um, and oftentimes, uh, the breaching of a door cannot occur through one hit. It takes usually multiple times with a ram. This breaching tool is a is a kinetic breaching tool, essentially. Um, um, it fires a uh a little, like, a basically a piece of metal that will breach the door for us. The Cyanex Weapon Systems is a upgrade for uh members of our SWAT team. Um, uh, basically to um to add uh inventory to their their tactical weapons that they that they currently use. Um, with that weapon system, we propose the purchasing of suppressors. The idea behind the suppressors is that it uh will add a layer of safety to the public, uh, to the officers. Um, um, if there was an unfortunate incident, uh, an active shooter, uh, where there was a threat to the public and the officers had to fire these weapons, uh, the concussions from any uh round being fired from the rifle could cause significant damage to eardrums uh to both officers and to the public. So uh this item is being proposed to increase uh the safety to them. Finally, the Master Peace Arms uh Rifle. We are requesting the acquisition of this uh rifle for the specific reason that it is a left-handed rifle that is, that would be purchased uh by one of our SWAT team members um personally. This this weapon is specialized and basically um um made for a left-handed shooter versus a a right-handed shooter. Next slide, please. The recognition of the police department is to receive the 2022 Calendar Year Controlled Equipment Report uh and approve acquisition of the proposed equipment. And with that, uh, I welcome any questions.
Any questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Fan?
Um, uh, first of all, I want to commend um Assistant Chief Morales uh on a very impressive presentation. Um, I I think this is probably the first time we've heard from you as uh Assistant Chief. And um, you know, I think I think um Jared made a good pick. So I I want to commend um your department um on uh the the statistics that we achieved with uh no complaints, no uh incidents. Um, I think that's something that we have to be proud of uh in light of, you know, a lot of uh the noise around uh public safety in in other municipalities. Um, the equipment that we've invested in has been able to um really make the city safer. Uh, I've, I recall getting updates um often from well, um, from from Chief Hernandez on um, you know, some some pretty intense cases, uh, bank robberies and 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 whatnot. And the use of our equipment has been able to really uh made um resolution uh a lot easier and smoother. So it's something that um I'm very supportive of. I would say that um the equipment that you're proposing, it sounds really cool. And um I I'm a real visual guy. I feel like if we saw, like, videos of how of it in action, um, you know, that's something that would be just really awesome to watch, but you know, I'll YouTube that later. It sounds fun. Um, but I I I know that it it will get work done. I think if anything, um, people who consider a career in law enforcement, knowing that we have all these tools in place, um, all the resources at our disposal, um, the highest um advancements uh in in equipment, uh, that's a huge um incentive, a huge value proposition to join the team. So of course, I I will be supporting um the request, and um, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pan. Next, we will have uh Councilmember Leanne.
Yes, and thank you for your services. Sirs. Can you go back to page five, please? So the first three, the top three, you have three years, 10 years, five years, and then the rest are 30 years. Now, will these last longer than this? Or the replacement, the the new acquisition is going to replace them?
Well, thank you for the kind words, First Councilmember Fan. I really appreciate that. Um, I'll do my best and look forward to future appearances here. Um, and Councilmember Leanne, as far as those questions, the question, it's a great question as far as what the intent is on those uh purchases. Uh, the unmanned aircraft, they do have a shelf life. We're talking maybe three to five years. It just depends on how much use they're getting. So this is just the typical expected life. And as we approach the end of the uh life of that equipment, then we conduct our our internal process as far as evaluating um what is a fiscally sound decision as far as replacing it, uh, what equipment will best serve the community, what uh equipment will best protect our officers. So um, I hope that answers your question. It's the robot has a life of about 10 years. As as we approach that eight, nine years out, then we start evaluating on the process to replace it. Once the governing body, in in this case, City Council approves this, then with our current policy, it would just be replaced um um as as a matter of our inventory, the inventory number that we carry.
And going back to the acquisition, how much is it to purchase all the requested items?
Okay.
Do you need a calculator?
So I'll I'll cover, I'll cover that question because I think it's also important to recognize that these purchases will not have an impact on the general fund or operating budget because all of our acquisitions um that we're looking at will be paid for with COPS grant funding. So uh just to put it in perspective, for the two UAS pieces of equipment, that's $61,000. A lot of that cost is involved in the camera systems versus the actual UAS itself. Um, so that's that we have for the kinetic breaching tool, 11,000. So for those two, we're at now 72. For the replacement of uh aging uh rifles and then the suppressors is 26,000. And the master arms sniper rifle, uh, there's no cost to the city. The employee has an existing rifle that meets our specifications, and because they're familiar and comfortable with that weapon, they're asking to use that in the course of their official duties.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Leanne. I think we have Vice Mayor Chua next.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank you for your presentation and welcome. I think this is your first time presenting a job, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I also um want to thank you for your presentation, both of you, Chief Hernandez and Assistant Chief Morales. Thank you very much. Uh, I I do appreciate that you were able to explain to the public that most of this equipment is through grants, so it's not really touching or going through the general fund, which I think many people appreciate. Um, and also, we are taking a proactive approach with all this equipment because, you know, the world has changed. Uh, you have school shootings and, you know, sometimes you just have these um incidents that are horrifying. And it's really great that we have a police department in our city that is prepared. And that means the council approving these um requests because it's really important that we be prepared. And what I love about this is the analysis, and it just tells it like it is. The Milpitas Police Department is committed committed to protecting lives and property by working with the Milpitas community and providing professional and responsive police services. That's the bottom line, and that's why we really appreciate our police department to protect and serve. And just like on the police vehicles, it says, to protect, no, in partnership with our community. So thank you so much for your presentation. And I think we have um a motion, I need a motion and a second. So oh, one more public comment. I apologize. Thank you so much, Chief and Chiefs.
You were all cited by all of you. Um, yeah, we were ready already, and we will be more ready because of the proposed ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor. And I believe I saw Councilmember uh Fan that wanted to make a motion. There are no hands raised on this.
I think.
Councilmember Fan?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Leanne. And now we're ready for the vote. Councilmember Barbadillo? Hold on a minute. Aye.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne?
Aye.
Councilmember Fan?
Aye.
Mayor Montana?
And I am an aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Okay, the next, I I think we're, we need to do the consent items, right? Okay, so the first one is C6, and this is the Animal Services, and it was pulled um by Councilmember Leanne. So can you go ahead and discuss what uh, why you pulled it?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to understand uh this item. One is to to know if the three-year contract cost us 1.6. Did we offer an open bidding process for this? Or is this something that we have done with City of San Jose, and it just continues on? I don't know who is in charge of this item.
Yes, hi. Um, good evening, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. This is Bill Todd, your building official.
Hi, Bill.
Yeah, hi. And uh, yes, since 2001, uh, there's been um, well, starting with three-year contracts mostly from uh San Jose Animal Services. Um, and that's been perpetuated over time. So uh, in a nutshell, that's that's where we're at. So bid process, um, no, the the council requested staff to come back, uh, I think, last year with some um workup on alternatives. And of course, that was covered in the AR that you all have and uh have reviewed. Um, and the alternatives really didn't present uh much of a viable alternative to what we have going with San Jose Animal Services. Um, and in looking at this, uh, I'll call it a a setup with three initial term years, fiscal years, and then two options, um, that really That really helps, I believe, create kind of a lid, if you will, on, on the costs. So it's, it's four percent a year, which, you know, in this day and age of runaway inflation, it looks pretty inviting. One of the other services, Silicon Valley Animal Control Authority, they do not have that option for multiple-year contracts. For instance, they only have a one-year annual renewal contract. They were the next closest, in my view, at least, to the three options that we reviewed relative to San Jose Animal Services setup. So also, we do get about $45,000 a year in license fees that are collected for us by San Jose. So that initial year of 1.655, actually, it's going to be more closer to 1.5 million. So again, we don't have that option with Silicon Valley Animal Control Authority. They, they do not give us those fees back. So do you have any other questions I can answer?
No, that's the only question I have for you. Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
So Councilmember Leon, would you like to approve or? Yes.
Mayor, we need to call for public comment.
Public comment for this item?
Thank you for reminding me.
Anyway, this is simple. I hope we have it here, but we have problems with space. Like, we'll have that, have like, I always go to Monterey Highway and Monterey Road, bring cats there. But, you know, we can have in Milpitas. We used to have it, I think, somewhere, by Amex. But I think, yeah, it's space, and I think this is cheaper this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor. So now going back to the motions. Was there a motion and a second? Let's see. A second. So it was motioned by Councilmember Leon and seconded by Vice Mayor. So take the vote. Councilmember Barbadillo?
Do. Aye.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Leon?
Aye.
Councilmember Fan?
Aye.
Mayor Montana?
Aye.
So it has passed. And I will call on the Vice Mayor. Mayor, I would like to defer C9, C13, and C14 for next meeting, please. Second. Okay. And do we need a vote for this one as well? Okay, so we'll vote on this. Please call the vote. And so it was motioned by Vice Mayor to defer C13 and C14, and it was seconded by Councilmember Barbadillo. Okay, so we'll call for the vote. Councilmember Barbadillo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Leon?
Aye.
Councilmember Fan?
Aye.
Mayor Montana?
And I am an I. Thank you very much. Okay, now, so now going to item C16, the naming subcommittee. And this is by Councilmember Anthony Fan.
I'll move for adjournment.
I'm sorry?
I'll, I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
You want to adjourn? You don't want to discuss this item? We have one. It's not 11 o'clock yet.
I mean, I.
Do you want to defer it? Or just, well, you know, you can always just approve it, too.
I, it would require a, some deliberation and.
Okay, so you want to require, you want to do another deliberation?
I want to be respectful of our.
You must be tired. Okay, well, we will defer this item, C16.
We will need a motion and second?
Hold on a minute. Un momento. Okay. Hold that.
Motion to defer item 16 and adjourn the meeting.
Adjourned.
Seconded by, moved to adjourn the meeting by Councilmember Fan, and it was seconded by Councilmember, by Vice Mayor Chua. So now we'll take a vote.
Defer and adjourn.
And we defer item C16. And is there a motion? I mean, is there a roll call? Do we need a roll call for that? Yeah.
Councilmember Barbadillo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Leon?
Aye.
Councilmember Fan?
Aye.
Mayor Montana?
And I am an I. Thank you. Good night, everybody. And meeting adjourned.